This present State Board of Education meeting of January 14th, 2020 is called to order. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are. There's a good number of individuals. Each person will be allotted three minutes. You can monitor it here. And please allow me to go over the rules for public participation. If you have handouts, please pass them to the person closest to you at the table, which will be Carol Ahie, most likely, and we'll just pass them around. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. However, you may be contacted after the board meeting. Public participation guidelines state that forms must be submitted prior to the beginning of the public comment portion of the meeting. Do I have all the forms? Great. Okay, I'll grab that in just a second. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name will be gavelled down and asked to cease. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. I'll let you know who our first speaker is and then who is going to be the next person. The first speaker and the remaining speakers will just come to the end of the table here. Our first speaker is William Miller, followed by Jessica Murphy.
Good afternoon. Bill Miller, Executive Director, Michigan Association of Intermediate School District Administrators. I represent ISD administrators and leaders across the state, and I want to talk to you today about Path Forward. I was honored to be selected for a Steering Committee member for Path Forward. And over the past few years, intermediate school districts have picked up new roles and very serious roles with federal accountability as well as being sub-receipients of federal dollars. So we feel that our responsibility and accountability for improving outcomes for students with disabilities is a very high priority for our members and our association. We're pleased to have a system and ISDs that support special education on a very high level and to the point that our board has authorized us to establish a network of leaders in general education and special education to work on issues such as graduation rates, participation in the general curriculum for students with disabilities, and of course, raising achievement. I just wanted the board to know that you have a really good partner in the intermediate school districts and that we're committed to working on the challenges that you'll see soon from Dr. Kinesneck's report on Path Forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Murphy, followed by George Guzman.
Hello. My name is Jessica Murphy, and I'm here on behalf of Michigan Protection and Advocacy Service, EMPASS, the nonprofit organization that is mandated to advocate for people with disabilities in Michigan. EMPASS staff were part of the work group that wrote the special education report you'll hear about later this afternoon. We thank the Michigan Department of Education for including us in the work group, and we support the report's recommendations. We believe, however, there are additional problems with special education services in Michigan that contribute to poor outcomes for students with disabilities. In our experience, one of the reasons that the state continues to perform poorly in special education, such as failure to improve graduation and dropout rates, is that the districts are noncompliant with the requirements of the IDEA. The state complaint process is a unique component of the state's general supervision in that it is the only way that parents can bring issues of noncompliance directly to the attention of the Michigan Department of Education. The investigation of parent allegations can help MDE find and correct noncompliance with the law and also provides a less adversarial and faster means of resolving individual problems. Over the past several years, EMPASS has worked to ensure that the special education administrative complaint process functions properly. In recent years, MDE has conducted complaint investigations and issued decisions that are thorough, well-documented, supported by law, and consistent with student-specific data. Most local districts have responded favorably to the more appropriate processes. However, some school districts have responded to the parents' filing of a state complaint and subsequent investigation by filing a due process hearing request against the parent, effectively ending the state investigation into their alleged noncompliance. This due process hearing is a court-like proceeding with court-like rules for procedures. School districts are often represented by counsel, while the vast majority of parents cannot afford to retain one of the few attorneys who represent parents in such cases. Due to the increasing formality of the due process system, a parent who is not represented by an attorney is unlikely to navigate the due process system with any success. In 2016, parents of a student with a disability filed a state complaint alleging the district was not compliant with the law. The district retaliated by filing a due process complaint against the parents on the same issue. EMPASS agreed to represent the student at the due process hearing. In the end, the cost to the school district, who eventually agreed to settle in 2019, was $300,000, not including whatever fees the district's attorneys charged. Because the case was settled, rather than decided in federal court, there is no decision that might dissuade other districts from using the due process hearing request to circumvent MDE complaint investigations. Federal guidance has specified that school districts are discouraged but not legally prohibited from this practice. EMPASS believes it is within the scope of MDE to write protections for parents who have filed state complaints into the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education. EMPASS highly encourages the Michigan State Board of Education to review more information about this issue as part of its duties to oversee MDE, and EMPASS stands ready to work with the department towards this end. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jorge Guzman, followed by Marisol Baltiera.
Hello. My name is Jorge. I'm here to speak for people, immigrant people, living here in Michigan for, you know, having no driver's license like I do. I lived here in Michigan for 22 years, and it's really tough for people like myself and more people. And, you know, back in 10 years ago, you got, all the migrant people, you got some driver's licenses. Not anymore, and it's really tough for us, for us, the people that have no driver's license. I speak on myself, and I have four kids. I gotta take my kids to the school every single day. I gotta be in the road like you guys. The only difference, I know I have no license, and I gotta be, it's dangerous. And it's tough to live in for 10 years for no license, and it's really, really hard. And you gotta be, like you say, gotta be in the road every single day, drive for no license, and that's why I'm here asking for all the people who have no license. I hope you guys do something for us. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marisol Baltiera, followed by Adalia Tenoco.
I'm gonna translate for Marisol. So we will try to let it be a dozen, three minutes, but, all right. Buenas tardes. My name is Marisol Baltiera. Good afternoon. My name is Marisol Baltiera. Yo estoy aquí, vengo de parte del de cosecha. Estamos, este, venimos a pedirle una licencia, hacerles saber lo importante que es tener una licencia para los padres. I'm here from Movimiento Cosecha in Grand Rapids and to let you know the importance of driver's license for parents in Michigan. Nosotros los padres tenemos, no es el temor nomás de nosotros sino de nuestros hijos, en no poderlos llevar a la escuela, en no poderlos llevar a una cita médica. The fear is not just for us, the parents, but also the students when we can't take them to like a doctor's appointment or an appointment at school. Yo tengo tres hijas, y es muy triste saber que ellas tengan prácticas después de escuela y no puedan asistir a ellas por no tener quien nos lleve o quien nos recoja. I have three kids, and it's very sad that they have practices, like football practices or any type of activity after school, and I can't take them because of the fear. Es triste saber cuando el médico te dice que tu hija tiene obesidad y que tengas que llevarlas a diferentes citas y no puedas hacerlo por no tener una licencia para poder transportarlas. It's very sad. The doctor tells me the kids need more activities, have obesity, and they need to practice more or run more, but I'm afraid to take them to those practices. Y saber que en la escuela te pueden ayudar, que tienen muchas prácticas después de escuela, y no poder asistir a ellas tampoco. And I know that at school, they have activities and practices that I could, that they could go, so like my kids can have more exercise, but I'm afraid and I can't take them. Hay muchas, este, ayudas en lo personal. Mis hijas tienen, una de ellas es muy inteligente, le gusta mucho la escuela, le han dado oportunidades ir a otras escuelas, a ejercer algunos exámenes, por ejemplo, de matemáticas, y no poder asistir por no poderlas llevar. I have, one of my daughters is very smart. She excels in math, and she has the opportunity like to go and compete to other schools, but I, she won't be able to take that test or to have the opportunity because I can't take her. Es impresionante que el temor de ellas sea más grande que el de nosotros. A ellas les da temor hasta ir con el vecino y pedirle si les puede llevar porque saben que va a ser un no. It's incredible how the fear is instilled in them. Like, they're also afraid to interact even with the neighbor, to ask for a favor because they think that they're gonna be against them. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Adalia Tenoco, followed by Jose Aguirre.
I'll be here for support.
That's fine.
Buenas tardes. Gracias por atendernos esta tarde a todas las familias que estamos luchando por obtener una licencia de manejo. Good afternoon. Thank you for listening to all these family members and parents that we are fighting for driver's license for all in the state of Michigan. Es muy cierto todo lo que dijo mi compañera, madre de familia, y también yo vengo a hablar acerca de lo que nosotros sufrimos con mi hija. It's very, very true. All the person before me said, Marisol, my friend, and I'm here to tell you also how I've been suffering as a mother. Mi hija llegó a Estados Unidos cuando tenía dos años. My daughter came here when she was two years old. Ella, cuando tuvo la oportunidad a los 15, 16 años de poder tomar una clase de, para obtener su licencia, cuando ella pudo sacar su permiso para su licencia a los 16 años. When she turned 16, when she was ready to get a driver's license permit? Ella no lo pudo hacer porque no cuenta con un seguro social, y la licencia, para obtener la licencia, es, el requisito es tener un seguro social. She couldn't obtain it because one of the reasons that there is no access to driver's license is because of social security number, and she didn't have one. La historia es que ahora mi hija tiene 19 años, y ella sigue sin una licencia de manejo. And the story now is that my daughter is 19 years old, and she can obtain driver's license? Para mí es una, es una estudiante excelente. I consider my daughter an excellent student. Pero siempre tiene ese problema, tenemos ese problema, de que o trabajo o la llevo a la escuela. And then we have this dilemma. Either I take her to work or I can take her to school. Posiblemente pensarán, pero ya tiene edad para andar en el camión. But you think, you know, she can take public transportation? Desafortunadamente, es un, es un sufrimiento para ellos, el no tener papeles y estar siempre con el miedo de inmigración. And there's a fear to go out on the streets and to see maybe eyes will be around on the streets? Así que nosotros sufrimos por el hecho de que ella siempre tiene que estar buscando un ride con las amigas. So we always have to go and ask for a ride, or she has to ask her friends to give for a ride, and it's very difficult for her to transport herself. Ese miedo siempre ha venido desde cuando ha sido ella niña, que por lo mismo que sus padres no tuvieron una licencia, y siempre fue el mismo problema. Entonces, psicológicamente pienso que están dañados nuestros hijos. So that fear was since she was little because the parents didn't have the access to driver's license, and that fear has been stored in her. And she's a bright student, but she's still with that fear, and it's like a trauma. Yo soy dueña de un negocio, y puedo decirles también cuánto nos afecta a dueños de negocio el hecho de que no haya una licencia para una persona que no pueda tener un seguro social. I am a business owner, and I can tell you also as a business owner how hard it is for us to get the business going and for the people to come to our businesses without a license. En realidad, este es, este es un problema para nosotros, pero también es un beneficio muy grande para el estado de Michigan. It's an issue for us, but also it will be a benefit for the state of Michigan. Porque sabemos que, afortunadamente, habemos mucha gente que no contamos con una licencia, pero tenemos la posibilidad de comprar un carro y de pagar una aseguranza cada mes. Even though that we didn't have access to driver's license, we're able to buy a car or purchase insurance, but with limited process, but we still have to transport ourselves. Yo espero que a todos, este, les toquemos el corazón este día y nos apoyen a todos, a toda esa gente que no tenemos el acceso a esa licencia, que desafortunadamente el hecho de no tener seguro social no nos hace inválidos o que no podemos manejar o que no sabemos manejar. So I hope that our words can touch your hearts and be in favor of driver's license for all, because matter of fact, there is not a social security, it doesn't prevent us from being a person, from being a human being, and participating in our community. Gracias. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose Aguirre, followed by Dolores Alvarez.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Aguilar. I am here from Wyoming City. I'm by Grand Rapids area. And the reason I'm here is to support or with my friends for license for all. And I've been proudly in the community for 22 years in Michigan. I have, I had my license for 12 years, and I have not my license now for 10 years. And it's a very frustrating issue for us not to have it because we're always in fear to drive around the city or anywhere. I cannot take my kids anywhere for vacation because I can't drive. Today I have to take out my kid. They go to Kelloggsville District Schools. One of my kids, my older one, he is now available to drive. He has his driver's license, and I have to take him out to school. He's gonna be graduating this year. Well, also affects us a lot because I, like Adalia, I am a business owner, and not having the driver's license takes a lot of my business away from me because I cannot drive anywhere near Lansing or anywhere else in town. So I will love for all of you that are able to vote for approving our driver's license to help us in that end. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Our next speaker is Dolores Alvarez, followed by Oscar Castaneda.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dolores Olivares. I'm from the Skegan area, Skegan, Michigan. And I'm here in behalf of Cosecha Movement. And I really want to tell you that even though I have a driver's license, because I was born here in the United States, I fear for my friends, and I worry about my friends, and I care about my friends. Because I have seen a lot of my friends go through a lot of hardships because of their, not having their driver's license. There's been moments where they've been picked up because any little thing that might go wrong with the vehicle that they might be driving. And so they get picked up, and of course, they don't have a driver's license, so what happens? They put them in jail. My friend was pregnant at one time that she was picked up because she didn't have a driver's license, and she was put in jail. She lost her baby. She was pregnant. She lost her baby because she was so scared what was gonna happen with her. She was so scared that immigration was gonna be coming for her, and her family was at home. She was so scared because she couldn't speak up and defend herself because of a language barrier. What happens to all these people because of the fear of not having a driver's license? A lot of times, they have to walk to the emergency hospital because to work, they don't have a driver's license. They have to take a bus or even sometimes walk to their jobs because they're afraid that if they get caught, immigration will be called and deport them, and they're gonna be separated by their children. With, incident happened, and immigration did come for a friend of mine, and the children were in school. By the time they got out of school, found out that the mother was gone, was separated from her family because there was an issue of her driving without a license, and they found her. And so that happened to her. There's a lot of stories that I could tell you, but mostly it's not so much that I want you to feel sorry for them. I want you to give them a break because they deserve respect. They deserve that break. And you're the only ones that can help her, help them get this driver's license. It happened one time many years ago that they were issued a driver's license. I know this because I worked for the Secretary of State. I'm an interpreter for the documents that were translated. And so then they were given that opportunity. Something went wrong through the years, and then it stopped, and they were no longer supposed to get their driver's license anymore. So now they're in hiding again and taking a risk of not being, or not being caught because some of them do drive without the driver's license. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Oscar Castaneda, followed by Angel Bravo.
Good afternoon. As you said, my name is Oscar Castaneda. I'm a community organizer here in Lansing with an organization called Action for Great Lansing. And our organization is part of the coalition of organizations that put together this bill and send it, and is leading this project. The first thing that I want to do is I want to thank this board for being brave enough to look into this issue. I have daily conversations with many people about driver's licenses, and the vast majority of people will say, "Yeah, it makes sense. Yeah, it's fair." For financial reasons, for humane reasons, for common sense, everybody says, "Yes, it's a good idea." But when the political moment comes, our politicians are not ready to make brave decisions. So I really commend this board for taking up the issue. Providing driver's licenses for folks who don't have one now just makes common sense. It's just common sense. It helps in many areas. There are many large business organizations in the state that are supportive of the idea because the economy of Lansing is moved in the wills of the immigrant community in Michigan. Michigan is, as we all know, Michigan is a huge state in terms of agricultural businesses. Farming in general runs in the wills of the immigrant community. So it's just fair to provide the resources that they need. Michigan is not, even our big cities are not places where you can move around easily in public transportation. It's just, it's very difficult, especially in the winter. I'm not gonna go over the history and the stories that people mentioned here before. There's so much, there are so many tears that have been cried in the issue of driver's licenses, of people being deported because they came in contact with the legal system just because they were driving in some town in some road. And like it or not like it, many of those folks are the parents of American citizens. American citizens who, they might be brown, but they are as American as everybody, as any other American, and they have the right to protection and the systems that are supporting everybody who is here otherwise. This is a broken system. It has been said so many times that the immigration system is broken. And I believe that America is about fixing problems, not creating problems. America is a place where you see something that doesn't work, and we get creative and we find ways to fix it. And there are many ways of fixing things with a humane vision that doesn't have nothing to do with separating families, which causes pain. It's about giving opportunities for the ones who want to work and want to be productive in this state. You hear about these two folks, they own businesses. They start from, a lot of people start in this country from zero. These folks start from minus something, and they own businesses now. I have a lot of respect for them. Thank you very much for your attention for this issue, and thank you for being willing to talk about it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Angel Bravo, followed by Gemma Low.
Now I know how my students feel when I try to put them in front of people and present. So my name is Angel Bravo, and I'm a faculty at Oakland University. Clearly, I'm here as a resident, not as representing Oakland University. And I just want to talk about my involvement with Cosecha and Cosecha Movement. Even though I'm here and I hold a license, I understand every single story from my friends where they describe the way we feel when we don't have a license. Even though I have a status here and I have a license, the moment I forget my license in my apartment and I leave is terrifying. And this is true, obviously, for someone who cannot really apply for a license and bring it to you. And this is something that many folks here in the U.S. do not understand. I used to live in Oklahoma, and I have a friend who, once I talked to her, and she said, "Oh, it's been a year since I haven't renewed my license." And I was terrified, like, how could you, this could be possible? Yeah, well, I never get stopped, right? But this is not true for the mindset of every immigrant in this country. So, Cosecha is looking for dignity, respect, and permanent protection for immigrants regardless, the immigration status. And remember, this used to be true back in 2008. The state of Michigan, before that, allowed immigrants to have licenses as long as they could show that they are resident from Michigan. We don't see why this cannot be brought back again in an administration that looks, look after their residents. So I just want to point out that your support for driver's license is important, and this has been recognized in other bodies such as the commissioners in Washtenaw. We marched a couple of months ago there, and we demonstrated that we are a white community. We are residents of Washtenaw, and the commissioners saw that, and they agreed to support our initiative to have private license for all immigrants. The office of the sheriff in Washtenaw agreed too, and they actually issued letters of support, and these letter of support are heading towards here to Lansing for supporting the bill that is currently in the process to be approved, hopefully. And obviously, we would like to encourage you to support that initiative as well. So just this driver's license will help us a little bit with the escalation of the violence against immigrants and the criminalization. As you, if you watch the news, this is clear from what is happening in the border. And just for those who think Michigan is a safe place for immigrants, it's not. It's the number one place of deportations, I'll wrap up in 30 seconds, of deportation in the whole country. And the number one reason for deport, to start a deportation here in Michigan has to do with a transit ticket. So giving you that, I hope you understand that driver's licenses are important for our community. Thank you.
Gemma Low is next, followed by Jacob Cherian.
Hello again. My name is Gemma Low. I'm an organizer with Movimiento Cosecha in Grand Rapids. I'm a parent of two daughters. My oldest is finishing up college in Grand Valley, and I... And I would like to say that sometimes she's the only person of color in her class. So we need to change that because my youngest daughter goes to Grand Rapids Public Schools. Grand Rapids Public Schools had passed a resolution in favor of driver's license for all because 40% of students in that district are sons and daughters of immigrants. And my daughter goes to a school where there's like 85, 90% sons and daughters of immigrants. And we see hand to hand what the impact, the negative impact it is and the stress fully for kids, their parents been separated for the immigration system. And just like Angel said, it starts with a traffic stop. The thing is, a driver's license is just a piece of plastic with your photo on it and it also tells you that you belong in a place that you've been living there for 10, 20 years, right? And then it's a dignity and respect that, one thing is the immigration system, which is something federal. Another thing is just the ability to transport ourselves to the things, daily things that we all take for granted because someone holds a driver's license. And also in the Grand Rapids area, the Gaffray Public Schools have passed a resolution for driver's license for all. Other states have passed the legislation that is right now, you know, the one we're talking about here in Michigan, most recently New Jersey. Here in Michigan, 130,000 Michiganders will be benefited from having a driver's license. And one thing is to be safer in our community, to know our community and to have dignity and respect for immigrants, regardless of, regardless of how they came here because there was, believe me, being an immigrant is not like a choice that is easy. I'm just going to vacation to the United States. We come here to a better, for a liberal life and better life for our kids and our family, just like any other immigrant in the past. So we mentioned that the immigration system is one thing. Right now, in your hands, you have the opportunity to tell immigrants that you are standing with them, that understand the importance for the parents to be participants in their kids' school and would like for you to pass a resolution for driver's license for all. Thank you.
Jacob Cherian, followed by Simon Marshall Shaw.
Dr. Rice, members of the board. My name is Jacob Cherian. I live in Michigan. My concern is with students recognizing that CO2 is essential for plant life. If you look at this plant in front of me, are you able to discern that the dry mass of the plant comes from the atmosphere? This concern is raised in an education paper from 2014, which notes that it is well documented that students, K through 12 to college students, struggle to explain where the matter comes from that makes up plants. Most students do not understand that the dry mass of plants comes mostly from carbon dioxide and instead consistently indicate that soil or water is the source of matter for plant growth. My concern is the paper which documents this followed the reasoning for experimentation, that certain experimentation, there's certain reasoning that students have to follow. But my concern is that in today's environment where there's so much talk of CO2 regulation that when the students make this experimentation, can they still derive the right conclusion? So I would strongly recommend that the board look through this to release an information bulletin that clearly details the conclusion rather than leave this for students to discern from their own experimentation and reasoning. So every student should understand clearly that the plant, that the dry matter in a plant is coming from the atmosphere and everyone should have the right, or every student should have the right answer before they graduate. Thank you.
Simon Marshall Shaw is our next speaker, followed by our final speaker, Catalina Adorno.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the board members for the opportunity to provide some testimony today. My name is Simon Marshall Shaw and I am a state policy fellow with the Michigan League for Public Policy. We're a nonpartisan state-level organization that is dedicated to economic opportunity for all in the state. So I'm here today to provide some information and speak to you about some of, more of the benefits of passing the Drive Safe legislation and really would encourage the board to vote, to pass a resolution in support of these bills, which would provide all Michigan residents, regardless of one's ability to prove his or her legal presence in the state, a driver's license or a state ID. I'm also passing around some information just to supplement this. So the league issued a report recently that looks at the ways in which the Drive Safe legislation will improve the lives of those in the undocumented community, as we've heard, but will also increase state revenues, have a positive economic and community impact across the state, and would continue to benefit other Michigan drivers that currently have licenses as well. So I just want to share some of these findings with you in a few minutes. So within just the first three years of implementation of the bill, we project that 55,000 Michigan residents would take up a driver's license and would obtain one and that 20,000 more would then register vehicle after purchasing that vehicle. So from this timeframe, we would expect a boost of $13.5 million over the course of those first three years. And there'd be recurring annual revenue as well that would take place over every year since. So from the vehicle registrations, the license and fees, and also the sales and gas taxes, we would expect this policy to generate state revenues around $100 million over the course of 10 years. So in addition, I wanted to talk about some of the economic and community benefits here. So we know that, and then we've heard today how when people have access to stores and amenities and restaurants that they don't already have in their communities or near their work, they're able to spend their money elsewhere across the state. So people are able to make decisions on where to spend money at businesses that they otherwise wouldn't have access to. And in addition, both employees and employers are able to find people who better match their needs. So that means that the employer pool is opened for employees who are seeking different work opportunities across the state and also that the employee pool is open for people who are searching for new employees. And I just want to note quickly for this group, the board that is, that access to driver's licenses means that parents are able to get their kids to school, as we've heard already. That's a really important piece of this. Every day, parents are driving their kids to school, they're taking them to doctor's appointments, they're taking them to get vaccinations. And that means that our classrooms are healthier, it means that our universities are healthier, and it means that more people are able to thrive in our communities. And finally, with the remaining eight seconds, I want to note that for other drivers, being tested on the road, which everybody would have to do, is a really important piece of this. In addition, drivers who have licenses are 10 times more likely to stop if there's an accident. And finally, we know that more people who have licenses in a pool that's paying insurance means that the insurance premiums would also go down. So I just wanted to enclose or close and say thank you for the opportunity to testify or provide some information today and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Catalina Adorno.
Okay, so I'll be doing my own translation as well, so I'll be speaking both in English and Spanish. Voy a empezar en español. Mi nombre es Catalina. Este quiero empezar primero que nada por darle las gracias a todos ustedes que están aquí hoy. Yo sé que es muy difícil, que todos vienen de diferentes ciudades y que están aquí contando sus historias a personas extrañas. So I was just referring to folks, thanking them for being here. Not only are we coming from different cities across Michigan, but also it's really hard for people to share their stories and to be really vulnerable. And I will be surprised if there's like someone in this room who maybe hasn't heard these stories before. So I just wanted to acknowledge that first. We're here today because, and as you've heard from the multiple stories that have been shared, people have a need for a driver's license. Like a lot of the times, we don't think about it or we take the issue for granted because many of us have a license or a state ID and we don't really realize why we need it, right? And we need it for so many things, from like driving, which is why many of us are here today, but also from things like, you know, you go to a place, they ask you for an ID and if you don't have one, it's really challenging. You can't even open up a bank account without an ID. And so how are folks asked to perform these like daily things or like these daily tasks that many of us take for granted when they don't have an ID or a driver's license? So we're here because we know that this is an issue that affects a lot of people, but it's also an issue that affects the whole families. So it's not just the parents, but it's also their children, as you've heard in the stories today. We've heard from folks who have shared how difficult it is to take their kids to school or to take their kids to the doctor or for their extracurricular activities. I think someone mentioned it's really hard to take them to like football practice or whatnot. Think of all these extracurricular activities that parents cannot engage their kids with just because they're afraid of driving, driving without a license. One of the things that many of us don't really think about is also how having a driver's license really minimizes the risk for families getting separated. I think in this climate right now, most of us have heard about what happens at the border where like children are being separated from their parents, but that's actually happening everywhere. And one of the reasons why that happens is when people come in contact with the criminal justice system, many times which are like very, for very minor incidents, right? So when we're talking about traffic and driving, a lot of folks, you know, like all of us, get stopped sometimes for like a minor traffic thing here and there. It happens. But for someone who is an immigrant and who doesn't have a license, that's their immediate entry point into a process that could, that could really end up in separation of their families. They could end up in detention, next thing you know, they call ICE, next thing you know, they're deported. So having a license really minimizes at least that risk, which is really important to keep all these families, right, like parents and their children together. Lo que estaba diciendo es de que estamos aquí porque sabemos que las licencias es una necesidad. Ya muchos ustedes compartieron, verdad, que es muy necesario tener una licencia para llevar a los niños a la escuela. Algunos ustedes dijeron que no pueden ni siquiera llevar a los niños a la práctica de fútbol porque no tienen una licencia. Entonces sabemos que es algo muy necesario y también que es algo que ayuda a que las familias estén juntas, ¿verdad? Porque hablamos mucho de la separación de familias en la frontera, pero la realidad es que pasa en todas partes de este país. Sabemos de que cuando un inmigrante lo para la policía, ¿verdad? Por una cosa, o sea pequeña, ¿no?, una cosa de tráfico pequeña. Muchos de nosotros, porque no tenemos licencia, paramos en las cárceles, en detenciones y en unas peores situaciones hasta el proceso de deportación, ¿no? Entonces sabemos que la licencia puede minimizar ese riesgo. And we're here today to talk to all of you and to share all these stories because we just really want someone to stand with us in this fight. We know that the fight for immigrants, it's really hard, it's really challenging. We know that there's a lot of anti-immigrant sentiment, but really, we want people to just look at us and see, like fellow members of the community, people who want to be a part, who want to engage in their own communities, right? To not feel alienated in their own cities or towns that they live in. And we are here because we know that you all care. I know that, you know, many of you are not here for the money. I started to be a teacher. I know teaching is not where you make the most money. You know, you're here because you really care for people. You care for families and you care for the kids. And so that's why we're here sharing all those stories with you. Les estaba diciendo que estamos aquí compartiendo las historias también porque ellos son educadores, ¿verdad? Y sabemos que la mayoría de ellos no están aquí por el dinero porque en la educación casi no se gana mucho, pero que estamos aquí porque todos nos preocupamos por los estudiantes, por los niños y por... We, I'm actually originally from New Jersey. New Jersey just passed a legislation that allows immigrants to obtain a driver's license. And so we know that it can be done and we know that other states are doing it. Why should Michigan not do it, right? Entonces yo vengo de New Jersey, yo les estoy diciendo que soy originalmente de New Jersey donde se acaba de pasar la ley por las licencias. Entonces sabemos que se puede hacer, ¿verdad? Porque Michigan, este, se quiere quedar atrás, ¿no?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, so we're just here for your support and we're asking you all to support us by, yeah, passing a resolution in support of driver's licenses for all. Thank you.
Si se puede. Si se puede. Si se puede. Si se puede.
Any more?
No, that concludes public participation.
Thank you very much to all who provided public comments. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda is the presentation on Path Forward. Path Forward is a plan created by multiple stakeholders across the state that is designed to improve compliance, especially academic outcomes for students with special needs in Michigan. Plan was created after the U.S. Department of Education deemed Michigan is needing intervention regarding Part B special education compliance and results indicators in July 2018. Communication internally and externally regarding the recommendations and actions to implement them will be our next steps. Here to present to us this afternoon, Dr. Scott Kennichnek, Deputy Superintendent P20 System and Student Transitions, and Ms. Terry Chapman, our Director of the Office of Special Education. Gentle folks, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, board, for allowing Terry and I to spend some time with you this afternoon, sharing the recommendations from over a year's worth of work regarding improving systems that serve students with special needs. If you recall, I was here, Terry and I were here back in November of 2018, and at the time, we shared this particular document with you, which talked about the determination that we received from the federal government in July of 2018, that determination being deemed as needing to have intervention regarding our Part B system of special education. And we shared this plan with you in terms of how we plan to address that. And so what we'd like to do this afternoon is spend a little bit of time talking to you about that process that we've been going through for, again, about the past year and the product itself, which Marilyn will share in a bit, which outlines eight focus areas, 18 specific actions, and 54 activities that we feel will really improve outcomes for our students with disabilities. Before I do that, I do want to thank all of those that were involved in this process. Again, it was a years-long process, a lot of time spent. I know some folks are in the gallery today. I will ask you to stand, if you would please, if you were involved in the Path Forward work in any, in any fashion. And I cannot thank these people enough. This is a very small subset of a group of about 50 or 60, made up of state associations, labor unions, teachers, parents, university professors, members of the advocacy committee, and many others. And so I really want to acknowledge them and the work that they put into the plan. So with that said, we'll move into the presentation. So again, a quick historical look. On the left, you can see the determination that we received from the federal government in 2018. They give states, all 50 states, a determination on a yearly basis. Our determination was a score, a compilation score of 59.17. The determination is made in two categories. One, on compliance, and you can see where we rated on compliance, and on results. And that was really the premise of pulling our group together and developing these recommendations. The good news, a little bit better news, is we did receive our determination again in July of 2019. And if you recall, I think I did share that as well at one point, that we are improving. The trajectory is going up. And so we are out of the needs intervention, into the needs assistance. You can see the compliance scores, the result scores. But we did want to share that, that we are on the right path, though we still have a significant amount of work to do. Again, just a little bit of recap. It's a very busy slide. On the left are what the federal government gives us our results determinations on. And so I'll read down through real quickly and move quickly through the next couple of slides. The first is participation for fourth and eighth grade students with disabilities on our regular statewide assessment. So how many of our students with disabilities are taking the M-step? There is a rubric there. Going to the right, states receive a score of zero, one, or two, and you can see the percentages needed to earn a zero, one, or two. So participation in M-step. Below that is percent of fourth grade students scoring basic or above on the NAEP. And so this is a performance-related measure. Fourth grade on reading NAEP. Below that, eighth grade is the same thing, basic or above, again, reading, again, NAEP. Below that, there's math, fourth grade, and then also eighth grade math. So there are some performance measures that the federal government takes a look at with regard to performance. The bottom two are, to me, probably maybe the most urgent, and that is the percentage of students... of students graduating with a regular high school diploma, and then the percentage of students dropping out. And so those are the indicators that the federal government looks at on a yearly basis, which our determination is based upon. Here are scores, two years' worth of scores. And again, if you follow the rubric down on the left, it is those particular areas of fourth graders and eighth graders participating in assessments and scoring on NAEP. You see the percentage scores in the light shaded blue column, and then you see the scores that the federal government allocates based upon that rubric that I shared. The good news from 18 to 19, again, is that we're seeing progress in almost all of the areas. I will tell you, if we want one more out to the right, if I share, when I share the information next year in 2020, we will see continued progress, particularly on NAEP scores. Dr. Rice has talked about an increase for all students with NAEP scores. I will tell you that in three of these four categories, our students with disabilities are also performing better, which is good news. And so we're anticipating increasing that trajectory. So this is reading, again, and where our students were at in 2018 and 2019. This is second verse, same as the first, but it's math. So the indicators or elements on the left side, scores in the light blue from 2018, percentages and scores, as well as 2019, again, increases in NAEP we're anticipating for 2020. So the good news is we are on what we believe is the right trajectory. This slide, not so much. These are the final two results indicators that the federal government looks at, which is high school graduation and the dropout rate for our students with disabilities. You can see it, the graduation rate was stagnant at 63% from 18 to 19. It did go down slightly from 29 to 28, which is still significantly well above any acceptable level. So much work yet to be done. This quote, I'm not going to read to you, but we'll bring out the highlighted, or the, I guess the lighted quote at the end, is, "We're really about bringing out of the imagination ideas and then trying them in actuality." And that's what I'm going to share with you this afternoon in terms of what those particular ideas are, and we'll also share where they came from. Many of the folks in the room certainly should get credit for some of those. This was our steering committee that we started with. Again, many of the folks are in the room. I won't read you the names, but you can see it's a wide variety of folks, both internal to the department, but also many folks from the field, many folks extremely close to children. You will see labor and management, you will see the advocacy community, Detroit Public Schools, Community District had their own seat at the table, charter schools, Teri was also involved as well. So a broad group came together in the fall of 18, shortly after I made the presentation to you. And that group was tasked with doing two things. One, coming up with a vision for the work based upon their perspectives, and here is the vision. Again, it's text-heavy, I'm not going to read that to you, but they came up with a vision for the work. Part of that process included then a Stephen Covey-type activity. And what we did is said if we were to begin with the end in mind and develop a system that was good for all of our students with disabilities, what would those characteristics look like? Let's start with the end in mind. So we went through a variety of activities and came up with these 10 indicators, or elements, whatever you would like to call them. But this is what the steering committee came up with to eventually hand off to the work groups in terms of, this is the what, this is where we feel that we need to be in terms of the system, and that these were handed off to the work group members, who then actually started to delve into, all right, how are we going to get there? So again, these are work group members. Each of the steering committee members nominated three to four representatives to meet through the spring of 19, to go through a variety of activities to, again, develop the what, which is what I'm going to share with you shortly. There were approximately 40 work group members, and again, you can see by title and by representation of the districts. We've had folks from Detroit to the UP, classroom teachers, MDE folks, superintendents, special ed directors. About a third of the work group members were parents as well. And so these were the folks that were really tasked with the what of the work. Final group there, again, about 40 of us met over a course of about six months, if I can recall, through spring of 19. So here's the what. This is what we've been excited to share with you as a board. This is, these are eight buckets of work, or eight areas, that the work group members in the steering committee feel very strongly about, that if we are to, again, create a system that's going to improve outcomes for our kids with disabilities, these are eight areas we would like to begin with. This isn't a panacea. This is not all of the work that needs to be done in terms of improving systems, but these are the ones that we felt we needed to move forward with the most quickly to improve outcomes. And so we have improved instruction in inclusive learning environments. Bill talked a lot about that, including our students with disabilities in general ed settings, more than what we are now. Multiple pathways to graduation, so additional diploma options for our students with disabilities. I'll talk more about that in a bit. A reemphasis, I would call, on our personal curriculum that we already have as a tool within the state of Michigan. A look at educator certification and how we certify our special education teachers compared to the 49 other states and, I believe, seven territories. An emphasis on professional learning for both new teachers coming through the system. As I said, we had two university professors, both here, on our work groups, that were very engaged in terms of how can we better equip teachers and administrators as they're coming through the system, but also how can we better equip teachers who are in the system, perhaps that didn't receive the training that they need to work with our students with disabilities. How we use data is another area of focus. How we and what we communicate around M-step and NAEP was a seventh area, and then the final area is funding. So these are the eight big buckets of work. So what we, the next eight slides then, one slide per bucket of work, lists the actions associated with each area. So this first slide looks at improving instruction in inclusive learning environments, and then there are five actions that are listed there, implement dropout prevention and proactive strategies, again, improve instructional practices for all of our teachers. We know 80% of our kids with disabilities spend 80% of the time in a gen ed classroom. So this really isn't about just special ed. It's really, I would argue, more about general ed. A majority of the folks in the work group and the steering committee are general educators. But, so improve instructional practices. There is an action item regarding school climate, and a positive school climate and culture, analyzing data, and then also exploring innovative ways to deliver M-step. So those are the five action areas. I will say there are 13 activities associated with those five areas. Those activities are outlined in this document, which you will be getting shortly after the presentation, and there is a page number in the shaded blue where it says page nine. So if you are interested in looking at the 13 activities associated with improving instruction in inclusive learning environments, those can be found on page nine of this particular document. Again, multiple pathways to graduation is another one of the action areas that we would like to take a look at. All states do this differently in terms of how children earn diplomas, whether it be general ed or students with disabilities. And so this is one activity, but with seven, excuse me, one action with, one activity with seven steps, in terms of looking at what other states are doing. Some have a credentialing process for students with disabilities whereby if they meet a work-based learning credential, a safety credential, those kinds of things that may qualify for them for a diploma. Indiana has kind of a menu of options, that if they put together five or six different choices, it allows them to be eligible for a diploma. Ohio and Minnesota simply allow the IP team to determine that path for students with disabilities. And so it's done differently in many other states. And so what we said is, in Michigan right now, there's one way to a diploma that's through the Michigan Merritt Court. Perhaps with the use of a personal curriculum, we feel that there need to be more options for students and their families. Personal curriculum. So again, we have an awesome tool, I think, in the state of Michigan now, for students to use as they progress through the Michigan Merritt Court. It works well for some, it doesn't work well for others. It is inconsistently applied, it's nebulous in some instances, and it's done very well in other instances. And so you can see the action has increased consistent application of that. There are four activities associated with this. We have staff here at the department who are very well-versed in this, and we're certainly committed to, I don't want to say a reboot, but really doubling down on, this is an option, again, for our students with disabilities, and providing training and information to school districts who may not have that. Educator certification, this is perhaps the most contentious of these. You'll notice that the action doesn't say change educator certification. It says establish a stakeholder work group to explore, again, letter A and letter B. In Michigan, teachers are certified in one of 13 areas, endorsed in one of 13 areas. They also have to be special education teachers, also have to be general education teachers first. And that's different than some other states. And so what we said is, let's take a look at other states and what they're doing in terms of how they certify teachers. We know in special education, I would say we know, there is a teacher shortage. We know there are a large number of long-term subs who are very well-intentioned, but what can we do to put the most highly qualified certified teacher in front of our kids with disabilities? And so that's that particular bucket of work. Professional learning, I spoke to that a little bit earlier. That's for new teachers and administrators coming forward, as well as current ones in the classroom. There are four areas there, and the professional learning should be around, again, quality tier-one instruction for all kids. It could certainly be around the personal curriculum, how to develop that training and deliver it, perhaps in virtual or online modules, as MDEs partnered with MVU to do in the past, is certainly one of the talking points as well. So there is a large emphasis on training and professional learning for those that are already in the classrooms. Data, how do we use data is number two. Number one is developing a more accurate system for reporting, tracking, and communicating dropout data. So as we got into the dropout dilemma for our students with disabilities, what we found is that half of the kids that dropped out or were coded as dropping out of school, the reason for the dropout was being unknown. It was about 3,000 kids on a yearly basis. Well, we kind of joked that kids don't vaporize, they have to go somewhere, and so how can we better develop a system of monitoring and tracking those dropouts that may educate us as adults in terms of how do we, or do we need to shift some of the supports that we're providing for students to help with or mitigate the dropout issue? M-step and NAEP communication, how are we communicating with parents and families, with our legislators, with communities around both of those two assessments? M-step is certainly, I think, more understood than NAEP. NAEP is kind of fuzzy and nebulous to many. And so what are we doing to communicate to parents and families the importance of these? Can we do them in a different manner? We'll see, one of the issues is can we assess our kids differently with disabilities? And so basically, just a lot of communication around those two assessments for a common or more clear understanding regarding those assessments. The final bucket of work is funding. We've heard about five studies regarding school funding in five years, one very specific to special ed. I made that presentation to this board back in June, I believe, a shortfall of $742 million in the state of Michigan. Pleased with this year's budget process, we did see an increase in $60 million, so that number now is down to 682, but still a lot of work to do creating an equitable funding system for our students with disabilities. So how will we know when we got there? Dr. Rice is a big proponent of metrics, as am I, and so for this, actually, it was quite simple. We're going to look at those indicators that the federal government looks at as well. So we want to see a measurable increase in M-step participation, we want to see a measurable increase in the performance and participation on NAEP, a measurable increase in graduation rates, and a measurable decrease in dropout rates for our students. What I shared with you was a lot, and there is even more in here, and it can't all be done at once. And so you can see a phasing of the work, phase one, phase two, and phase three. We will begin work very shortly, both internally and externally, to tackle the first frame there. And the areas of focus in that first frame are developing that partnership that Bill already alluded to with the field to help move the work forward. We've said all along that MDE can't do this work alone. We can't do this work from 608 West Allegan. ISDs can't do it alone. Locals can't do it alone, teachers can't do it alone, universities can't do it alone. This is really an all-hands-on-deck issue. And so starting that partnership, not only with Bill and MAISA, but others in the field, is job one. You can see also, again, the additional paths to a diploma for students is a priority, as well as personal curriculum. You can see an update of our M-step flow chart. The testing season is upon us shortly, and we do have guidance right now for districts, but what we said is, let's take a look at that. And again, take a look at the guidance that other states provide in terms of the most appropriate assessment for our students with disabilities. And then the final area in phase one, again, is the professional learning piece, both for educators coming through the system and educators in the system. And there are some examples of professional learning. Moving into phase two, additional supports for MTSS and PBIS, the M-step communication piece. Again, investigate alternative ways to assess the knowledge of our kids. Not all of our kids can or perform well on standardized assessments. Are there other ways to assess the knowledge that they have? Maybe the answer to that is no, but I think we'll remiss if we don't ask ourselves that question. Teacher and administrator prep work group, again, hence the involvement of our universities that we're very grateful for, and then focusing on the whole child and their needs. Finally, phase three, about two or three years out, the special education teacher cert work group, the NAEP work group in communications around NAEP, and then the final one is how we're using technology in the classroom to instruct, and then comparing that to how we're using it to assess as well. And so that's how the work is laid out from a phasing point of view. So I just shared a tremendous amount of information with you, and would certainly field any questions that you may have. Again, Marilyn will share this document that has all of the activities listed in it as well.
I think, I think this is a good time to share that document at this point. You were, you were being careful to show your knowledge of Madeline Hunter, which is a good thing. We didn't want, you didn't want to lose people's attention to the, to the document. Board members, any thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Ms. Vekto?
Yeah. Thank you, Scott and Teri. I know you've been working really hard, and thanks for including me as part of the work group.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. So I'm wondering what changes needed to be made to create some of the changes, like the alternative or the other options for graduating? Does that, is that something that is, needs to be legislated? So is there a strategy once, you know, is it just, are there some of the Mars code issues? And what can the board do to help support some of these changes?
Sure. So as you know, because you were part of the conversations and part of the recommendation, what we would like to do is really take our time, take a look at what other states do, bring folks to the table, and get input from them, parents, the advocate folks, the teachers, the administrators, and that's obviously, in a perfect world, that's what we would like to do. Again, we know other states do it in different ways, so let's study those, let's learn about those, let's get input, and then eventually, it would take a legislative change. At the same time, we know there is legislation, multiple instances of legislation introduced around the current MMC. And so Dr. Rice has urged our legislature to take their time, get input, have the conversation, because it's a crucial conversation, but that would be our preferred way.
And you should know that we're having a conversation about this tomorrow with a, with a significant legislator. So this is an ongoing process, it is a legislative issue, and we're committed to moving this down the line. It's been in a segregated track, if you will, for too long. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Thank you for all of this work. I know this was mammoth, and so, and thanks to all the individuals who assisted. To the graduation, the alternate ways for special education students to obtain a diploma, I think that has been a long time in coming. I believed, at least when the first initial results came out from the feds, that Michigan was unfairly identified in that area because of the way we're legislated related to diplomas for special ed students. So I do appreciate the fact that we're putting that up front as we begin to relook at Michigan Merritt curriculum. Personal curriculum, you are absolutely right, is a very powerful tool, and unfortunately, I'm old enough to remember back when it was first developed and implemented, it got a bad rap the first couple of years. It was something that districts were not supposed to use, that it was a last-ditch effort, that it was, you know, don't use this or else. And I don't know if, that was a lot of years ago, but I don't know if that's part of what is still hanging on there. Plus that, I think people student at this particular time? That's the advantage, hence personal curriculum. But again, so I commend you for looking at that, and I think, you know, that needs to be somewhat on a fast track also, because I think in the long run, that is going to help students. Dropout, especially at the high school, is difficult to track, especially with high school kids who are over 16. So I wish there were magic answers out there as far as, because they don't vaporize. Chances are, they've just gone up the road a little bit, but it's trying to track them back down. So, you know, maybe hopefully coordination with some data across the state. I think UIC codes have helped with that, but if they are no longer enrolled in a system, it's very difficult to track them down, so.
Part of the conversation around that particular issue was the coding options for districts to enter when a student does drop out. And so again, we looked at other states. We looked at all of the Great Lakes states on all of these issues. And the dropout code possibilities, I believe it was in Minnesota, there are 12. In Michigan, I believe we have five. And so again, not that we could prohibit a student from dropping out, but if we have seven more reasons why a student dropped out, I would hope and think that that would educate us and offer us some insight as adults of, okay, here are some tweaks that we have to make within the system, because here's why kids are dropping out. Does that make sense? So certainly, that's one of the areas we're looking at.
Right. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other board members, President Albridge.
I'm glad that you mentioned, Judy, about the diplomas and about the personal curriculum, because I do remember at one time when the personal curriculum was first introduced, the idea being it was to make it harder, not less rigorous. So yeah, you could use a personal curriculum if you wanted to take, like, advanced, advanced math, but otherwise, you shouldn't use it, was the message. But I also remember a message about the diploma being that if you create this additional diploma, then you are denying some individual services until they're 26 that otherwise they would be eligible for. And so I'm just curious what the team thought about that, and if that's still a major concern.
Michelle was smiling again. She's recalling all of our conversations. You're exactly right. So when a student earns a diploma or is given a diploma by a school district, it does cease the services that they are entitled to in Michigan up till the age 26. And so the conversations that we had is, as we move towards any additional path, parents have to be very much involved, and the students, if they're their own guardians, have to be very much involved, knowing full well that a diploma ceases those services. That doesn't mean that all students with disabilities, if we move in the direction and are successful, will get a diploma at 18. Perhaps through the IEP team process, that means that a parent and a student access two or three more years of those transition services, and that diploma is earned at age 21, or 22, or 23. And so please understand, we are not about ceasing services whatsoever. It's being a little more individualized when we talk about an individualized education plan of when that diploma would be earned.
And there may be some parents that want their children to have an additional few years of education, after which they then can graduate. It may not necessarily help a graduation rate. It may help that individual young person.
Develop skills, and that's what we want to do, for them to develop the skills that they need to be successful in life.
Thank you. Ms. Vekto.
I have more, but I was waiting. Just, so I know we're using the matrix that we have to use in order to get better scores with the feds, like participation in the testing, which, as a parent of kids with special, you know, needs or disabilities, is not like, one of my goals in life is to make sure that they take every single standardized test. So I'm looking, is there a discussion, and I think there is, about moving and improving our special education system beyond what the feds are requiring in order to, you know, be compliant with their standards? And in particular, you know, there's been a lot of discussion around improving the transition process so that when they, when kids with IEPs come out, they have independent living, strong independent living skills, can get jobs, can go to college if that's what they want, whatever. And also, like, there was brought up in the comments section about improving the dispute process, or the complaint process by eliminating the due process, primary due process hearing as a way to sort of punish a parent for making a complaint. It's used improperly, and, you know, it was used against the teacher of the year a few years ago, and that's who they're talking about in the, who was, it was a whole tragic mess. The whole thing was a mess. And it was, to me, a misuse of that due process hearing after she filed the complaint. Then she, anyway. So is there, this group going to be able to be sustained, or will it be looking at other ways to improve beyond just the federal government's requirements?
The work of the Path Forward Group is around eight buckets of work. At the same time, as you know, Michelle, we had a wide variety of folks around the table. In some instances, we didn't agree. You remember that. And so some of the work that you're referencing, outside other agencies, other entities can still work on those particular issues. We will involve ourselves and be part of that as we can. But the work of this particular group will focus on those eight work areas, yeah. Again, not discouraging the other associations and individuals to continue to try to move the ball down the field on some of those other issues, because again, this isn't a panacea. We do all this, it's not going to create any kind of utopia. But this is where we feel we need to focus our efforts.
Pleased to also understand, our office's obligation is more than just the things that we report out federally. There's a lot of other things that we do to provide support to districts, and we're working differently with ISDs to increase the capacity between us to actually do a more effective job at the student level. So the things that are in this are specific to our determination, but the things you mentioned, due process hearings and our approach to that, we had had ongoing discussion. A transition is something we're always working to improve, and that's separate from this, but it's definitely work we continue to support.
Other board members? Thoughts? Comments? Concerns? Ms. Vekto, third bite of the apple.
So I know there's been discussion about having, making, streamlining the process to get more special ed teachers. And, you know, I've had, I've had my mind changed on that. I was initially very opposed to it, and now I see that there's, makes some sense. But with that discussion, I would assume that if there is specialized training for specialized groups, and I'm thinking, you know, deaf students, kids with autism, things like that, that they would have to get extra certification or extra endorsements or whatever in order to teach a population that might have unique needs that requires extra training? Is that?
That's certainly my belief going into the conversation, but again, we haven't even started the conversation of what that may look like. But yeah, that's a point that's very well taken. We can't train, I believe, we couldn't train a special education teacher in a generalist kind of way, and then put them in a classroom of children who are deaf and hard of hearing, because obviously, there are some very specific skills that they need. So that's a point very well taken.
Additional thoughts from board members? Questions? We want to thank you for your presentation. This is important work. We appreciate all those stakeholders who participated with you and helped drive this forward to a conclusion. Now we're into chapter two.
The work begins.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on read-by-grade-three communications. In 2016, the Michigan State Legislature passed Michigan's read-by-grade-three law, and districts have been implementing components of that law ever since. As prescribed in the legislation, this year's Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress must be used to flag students who are eligible for retention. As we approach the spring assessment windows, there are actions that districts need to take to prepare for this requirement and to communicate with families. The law describes specific timelines and dates that districts and families must know and follow. To meet the deadlines, communication between districts and families is important. This presentation provides an overview of those timelines and requirements and outlines the steps the Michigan Department of Education is taking in support of districts and families to assist with timely implementation of this law. Here to present to us, in part because she deeply enjoys these presentations, and in part because Dr. Brandy Buggny is otherwise engaged this afternoon, is Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, our deputy superintendent of educator, student, and school supports. Dr. Kiesler.
Thank you. And yes, Dr. Buggny is sad to not be here today, and also, Dr. Rice told me to stay away from the table more often, so I endeavor to take him up on his offer. We wanted to just share with the board a little bit more about the communication strategy for read-by-grade-three, with particular focus on how we're attempting to communicate to parents and educators. But we want to make sure that as we come into the final months before this last piece of the law falls into place, that parents are very aware of what is happening. And we know that much of this communication actually is not from the department and districts. We applaud districts for all the work they've already done to communicate to parents. In the lead-up to the communication we put out last week in this presentation, we've had a number, even more conversations with districts, and many districts have been doing many, many things beyond even what we're going to talk about here. But it is certainly time for all of us to join together and make very sure that everybody's aware of what is happening this spring. So here's our communication strategy goals. Like I said, we want to make sure parents are very aware. We want to make sure educators are aware of the law and what it means. We want to make sure they understand the timelines in the law. And we always want to be thinking about improved literacy supports for third graders. Today's presentation is very focused on the read-by-grade-three law itself and less about literacy writ large. I think next month, we're hoping to talk more about some of the overall literacy support. So again, law is this much. Literacy is much bigger. We have a communication strategy method. We are sending these formal monthly memos to communicate to districts about the responsibilities and timelines. And then we're also using weekly communications and timely resources through various listservs, and we plan to track our metrics so we can see how many we have, who's opening them, pieces like that. It's not enough just to send out a communication into the ether. We need to know that someone actually read it and understood it and is using it. The next few slides go through what's going to happen this spring. This was in a memo that went to districts last Thursday, along with a companion memo about assessment window timelines. So for anybody watching at home from a district, if you didn't see those memos, we encourage you to look at them or give us a call, and we'll help you find them. So what is going to happen? Third grade students begin testing as early as April 27. We had, this spring gave us a really challenging opportunity to find that balance of sufficient instructional time, as well as adequate time for appeals while staff are still available in schools. So you want third graders to have as much instruction as they can before they take the M-Step, but you also, districts have some things they have to do after the scores are received. So that was a challenge. And to help provide an option, the MDE is moving the testing window forward one week, the third grade testing window forward. It's actually the testing window in which third grade is included. There's other grades in there, too. Forward one week to begin April 27. The read-by-grade-three law itself requires that parents be afforded this 30-day appeal window from the date that the state, and the state in this instance is SEPI, mails this certified letter. I'm going to talk more about that. Student test results are available in the OEAA secure site within 24 to 48 hours after a student completes the test. Those are those preliminary assessment results. Those are the results we want districts to use. Those are the results we plan to use to generate the required notification letters. Districts are strongly encouraged to view those results daily during the testing window and begin parent communications immediately. So again, communicating frequently, we really are urging districts not to wait for that official state letter, to check the secure site, see which students are flagged for retention, potentially flagged for retention, and begin outreach to those families right then, as well as have their processes in place for other, the state, remember, the state assessment is not the sole determinant. It is one flag. Districts then need to look at other data. There are good cause exemptions. There's a number of pieces that have to happen. So it's important that districts are looking at the secure site and then activating their processes and looking at those other pieces, and not waiting for the state communication. We emphasize, and again, we know districts have been thinking about this a lot already, communicating very frequently with families. So we know they've been working to communicate throughout the year. We provided this memo. We've been working with, and I see Bill Miller's still here, I appreciate that, has been working with MAISA and the Michigan School Public Relations Association to help support districts in additional parent communications. So things like a parent resource toolkit, a sample letter, a draft of the SEPI letter so they know what will be sent, so they can get out ahead of it and send it to parents. And we are planning to reach out to districts in the coming months, who are projected to potentially have high numbers of students flagged for retention, and offer targeted technical assistance. So asking questions like, what is your plan to communicate with parents? And did you see our memo? And what, you know, are you ready? Do you need help? What do you think, what's your plan? I discussed this a little bit already. The law itself requires that SEPI send a certified letter to the parents or guardians of any student who is flagged for retention. A certified letter must be received by an adult at the address of residence. And the MDE, SEPI, probably all of you, all the districts are highly concerned about the challenges this proposes. Wrong addresses, parents not wanting to answer the door, or guardians not wanting to answer the door, not being able to then deliver the letter if someone doesn't receive the letter. It is a very complicated and challenging piece. It is what the law requires. So SEPI's been working very hard to try to figure out the best way to do it. We've been partnering closely with them. But again, we all, and every district we've talked to about this, says we're really worried about this, because we know some of our parents are not going to be found that way. And so how do we get the information to them outside of that certified letter? In the law, parents have 30 days from the mailing of that letter to appeal a retention decision. And again, we strongly encourage districts to communicate to parents ahead of that official state letter, and ideally resolve all retention decisions in a much shorter timeline. So if you know a student was flagged for retention, and you say, you, a district, you have a process to, say, grant one of the good cause exemption, or review a portful, or whatever your process is, you can do that before the letter actually is delivered. You can and should. We have a number of places where we're getting feedback on our communication, where we have a read-by-grade-three communication teams. We're working with MEMSBA, our elementary middle school principals association, excuse me, and MAISA directors, and we're working with the school public relations associations as well, to make sure that we are doing the best job we can to have our communications be accessible to parents and users. Dr. Rice?
Dr. Kiesler. Board members, questions or comments? Thoughts? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Back on slide five, using preliminary results. So I'm in a district, I, my third graders just finished taking the test yesterday.
Yep.
So I wait 48 hours. Principal of the building goes into the OEAA site. You're indicating that students will be flagged at that point. So it's.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So it's not that I, as the principal, sit there and look at your score and go, well, I think it's low. I'm not.
Nope.
There's going to be some sort of an indication right then and there.
Yes.
That.
Yes.
Okay.
And we also made and linked it in the memo, a kind of one, I think it maybe is two-pager, but a step-by-step of just how to find those results in the secure site.
Right.
So that people can, I know the secure site has lots of great information. Maybe you don't want to look at it all. You just need to go see that list, so.
Right.
But yes, there'll be a flag. It's not, it will not be up to the principal to try to do the calculation or figure it out.
Okay. All right. And then we are encouraging lots of times for them to then reach out to the parents, guardians at that point and say, looking at test results here, we probably need to have a meeting, look at some other data.
Yes.
And start to make those decisions right at that point.
Yes.
Versus waiting for SEPI to catch up with this.
Absolutely.
And another question, so the week of April 27, a district can begin to test their third graders. They may not, though. They may wait a couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
And another question, so the week of April 27, a district can begin to test their third graders. They may not, though. They may wait a couple of weeks, again, as you noted, to get in a couple more weeks of instruction, et cetera. But that's still going to just keep pushing the end-of-the-year timeline.
It is.
For that particular district. So those districts are going to have to weigh that pro and con.
Yes.
Related to, okay.
Thanks, Judy. Or Dr. Pritchett, sorry. Appreciate the summary. And we are, to build on that, encouraging districts to think, just as Dr. Pritchett said, will I have staff in the buildings? Will I have teachers available? Will I have staff at the central office? Whatever their process is, back up the 30 days from when you test and make sure you have a plan in place. So there is an option of when you test in the window, but there's this piece in the law of the 30 days. And so making sure that districts have a, a plan in place for that.
And it's associated with the official notification, not the unofficial or the informal notification from the district. Whether it ought to be that way in the law is a question. It is that way in the law. And we have to abide by that aspect of this law. Other, other thoughts by, is that a, is that a second bite of the apple?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
At least right now. What about the, the parents who have decided their child's not taking the test this year and they're exempting their student? Or, and I realize this is rare, but sometimes children get ill or they've had, you know, some sort of a traumatic event occur and they can't take the test for whatever reason. So are we leaving that up to individual districts then to make the best decision based on that particular case?
Yeah. I mean, we can't flag them as one grade level below on the M-step if they don't take the M-step.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Ms. Fekto.
So I'm wondering about, I know it's not a huge population, but in the appeals process, so let's say they're flagged, let's say they're in foster care or in a ward of the state or have a parent who's just incapable of healing. Are there other people who can make those, those exemptions?
Yes.
Good cause exemptions?
And actually, the good cause exemptions don't require an appeal. They stand separate from parent appeal. And the teacher and the district superintendent have authority to make decisions about retention on behalf of the child. So it's not limited only to the parent. That's just an additional, if, for instance, the district were to say, you have no good cause exemptions and we think they should be retained and the parent, and the parent wanted to say, well, we disagree, there's an appeal process there and the districts would need to process those appeals. But it's not only parent appeal that means a child won't be retained. There's a number of other reasons.
Is there a limit on how many students can get the good cause exemption?
Other questions, comments, thoughts, reflections? Yes, ma'am.
What role do they play?
That's a good question. In the law, it doesn't specifically say the IRIPs are a good cause exemption, but in some of the processes I've seen from districts, what they are doing is like an IRIP review now and kind of portfolio generation for kids to say, basically, we've looked at all the other data and we think they are, they shouldn't be retained, they should receive additional, they should move forward with additional supports, they should do that sort of a thing. So I think it'd be more using the IRIP as a piece of a portfolio look, which is a, a way to, it's an option for understanding whether or not a child should be retained.
We are, we are now speaking a foreign language. If we could translate the acronym.
Thank you.
IRIP, Individualized Reading Improvement Plans. It's another requirement of the law that we didn't talk about today because it's a part of the law that starts sooner. So this is the screening and early intervention part of the law, that when a child has a, a reading deficiency, that this, the districts are required to have these plans in place. Parents are supposed to be notified of them and students are supposed to be getting individualized or whatever their individualized reading improvement plan says they should be getting to help them remediate the reading deficiency that they had.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder.
Theoretically, there shouldn't be a student held back if they don't have an IRIP, right? Because it would be really random for someone to be reading fabulously and then not.
Yes, theoretically, the way the law is structured, no, they should not. It would have been, we catch it early, we intervene, the intervention doesn't, you know. In practice, there is a possibility someone would be flagged for retention for, you know, a bad M-step score and not on an IRIP. I think at that point, the district would look at their
Practice.
Their whole piece, well, I think they'd look at the child's whole
Right.
Data stream and understand, is this, is the M-step score an anomaly or is it indicative of we missed intervening with this child? We hope it's not the second ever, right, that we missed it, more that they have no reading deficiency, but that day they had a really, really terrible day or didn't try or
Or they had 102-degree fever.
Yeah.
Or someone died the, the, the day before. I mean, there are 1,000 different things can adversely affect a moment in a child's life and by extension, his or her assessment. And that would be viewed as non-analogous relative to everything that preceded that in his or her career. There is a riff off of the, the IRIP question, which is, you know, if you come from outside of the state
That's true.
And you weren't subject to, you can't be held back associated therewith. So, so that, that's a, that's a good cause exemption opportunity, if you, if you will. If you're within the state, though, if you've been struggling, you should have an IRIP, a reading improvement plan. And if you haven't been struggling, I think to your question, you ought not to have one, in which case you ought not to be subject to retention. Yes. Other, other questions? Más preguntas?
You know, I was thinking of our discussion about teacher shortage. And this document is well put together. But you just mentioned that if a student is having problems, there's a plan for that student. And we teach remedial reading, give them the services that, that student needs. With a teacher shortage, is that possible in all school districts? It's, it's, you know, it's good to have them on paper, but in reality, and with those students we retain because they don't get the services that they need?
Well, it's a, why don't you answer the, the narrow aspect of that? Now, I'll, I'll take the broader aspect of that. Go ahead.
Narrowly, within the law, there isn't a specific exemption for, you know, inadequate, didn't receive instruction from a teacher. There's also other protections in the law so that students aren't getting, or not, in not this part of the law, but overall in the law. Your point, though, about how districts are meeting the needs of students and the needs of all these laws in a time of teacher shortage is a much bigger question than I imagine Dr. Rice will know.
Well, and, and there are, there are districts, to Dr. Pritchett's earlier point earlier today around equity and equality of opportunity, there are, there are young people who are subject to very, very different conditions, either with respect to teacher availability or with respect to teacher quality, supports around teachers, libraries, the, the open, whether a library is open or not, whether it's sufficiently stocked or not, whether there are supports around reading intervention or not. So your point is well taken. Unhappily, there is nothing in the law associated with that. That should be our exhortation. That should be our driving force to do better by kids in districts where we are not satisfactorily supporting kids. Other, Dr. Pugh?
And I'll just add, because I usually just always do, that's why it's a horrible law. And that's why it's going to impact some communities far more worse, even though we saw the numbers decline as far as those who should be impacted. But it will still be disparate in, in the districts that we know that will be, in those that are black and brown and low-income districts that continue to be harmed by these irresponsible laws.
You know, and also number six, communicating frequently with families, that's ideal. But if the family doesn't speak the language or homeless or many different variables. But this is good on paper because there will be a lot of families that will not be impacted by communicating.
It presumes an availability and a connection with families that doesn't necessarily always exist at the local school level. Not that it isn't ideal, but that it may be difficult to, impossible with particular families.
Can I, can I say?
Please, yes.
You know, it's not that it's not just ideal, it's just that we know that they don't work. So then it just, that it, that it, that these communication tactics typically do not work. And so then it makes it seem intentional.
Some of the, and we've had this conversation internally pretty substantially, the, the families that need the communication the most or who would benefit most from the communication are often the most challenging to reach. And it is true, we're communicating to ISDs in local school districts. They then are communicating within their local school communities. And we know from, from experience that some of the communication is brilliant with, with families and some of it is, is really lacking. And in some cases, families are really lacking for, for young people. So Dr. Kiesler pointed out that you don't need to have a, a, an appeal initiated by the, by the parent or the grandparent, the guardian. But in many cases, that's going to be your advocate.
Oh, yes.
That advocate may, it may not come from the school for a particular child. And if it doesn't, and you have no advocate outside of the school, you're outside, you're out of luck. And it is an unforgiving decision. It's a decision made for you at nine years old that is immutable for, for the next six to eight decades of your life. Other thoughts from board members? Going once and twice, hearing none. Dr. Kiesler, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approval of State Board of Education meeting minutes. May please have a motion to approve the minutes of December 10, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Ramos Montini, supported by President Obrich is there, and that's the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Report of our president.
I'll be very, very brief. One, just to mention that January is the school board recognition month. So thank you to all of those people who give tirelessly to sit on local school boards. We appreciate you with an entire month. And I hope everyone had a happy holiday and a happy new year and welcome to 2020. That's it.
Thank you very much. Report of the state superintendent. Let, let the record show that in the interest of time, I'm foregoing my report. I may double up at some other meeting. Report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. LaHid.
Well, we'll just take all your time then.
He's a shortness of tongue.
I haven't been teaching in a while. I need to dust off and teach. So I'm going to go first, just like usual, and then, and then Trisha Zeeman, who is a teacher from Region 6 in Holt, she'll introduce herself. So I was actually really glad that you saw those robotic students this morning and heard all of that good news about AP and IB programs because I think that's what, those are examples of what schools can do to lift up and support students in healthy ways, in helpful ways. But I want to share a little bit about what happens when kids kind of drown in the expectations. I teach in Rochester. We have a lot of what you might call high flyers, high achievers. And I want to introduce you to one. I'm not using her real name, obviously. And just to preface, it's not that I think everyone shouldn't have an opportunity to take AP or IB programs or anything that they want, it's that sometimes it's too much. And I'll show you what I mean. We're going to call her Maddie. This is one of my, my seniors. Well, I had her as a junior and a sophomore. She goes to high school in Rochester and is 17. This is her class schedule this year. AP Spanish, AP Bio, AP Psych, Comp 12, Marketing, AP Calculus. Last year, she also took two APs and the year before that, she also took AP in Honors. Freshman year, because her family's fluent in German, she also took the AP German test, which makes her, which got her, and then along with some work she did from kindergarten all the way through 10th grade at a German school, she has the seal of biliteracy. She's applied to MSU, U of M, and OU. She's also the cross-country captain. She runs track, she babysits. You can see the list goes on and on. Her life is pretty typical for a lot of kids in Rochester. This is what they strive to do. This is the life that they make for themselves. And nobody really stops them. But even if that seems like, oh, that's a great schedule, Maddie also has an older brother who suffers from bipolar. And she has a mother who's a breast cancer survivor. Last year, her brother, we're going to call him Kevin, he was failing his college courses even though he is extremely bright. He was having manic and depressive episodes and had to come home for a semester while Maddie was preparing for her AP tests. And over the summer, the pressure was on her, or she felt the pressure was on her to help her brother and be a sounding board because his parents, even though they're wonderful people, they're very supportive, they, he felt maybe judged by adults and didn't feel so judged by his sister. But that made home a not very safe place for her. They would say things like, don't talk about how you're doing in your classes because that'll make him sad about not being in his classes. Don't upset Kevin, we need to keep him safe, we need to keep him alive. And that's a lot of pressure for a young girl. He was irrational, he was illogical, he was hard to talk to, he couldn't be reasoned with, reasoned with. Maddie kept all of that bottled up all day in school and then also wasn't allowed to really express it at home, all while having all of this on her schedule. This year, he's back at school, he's doing better. But Maddie doesn't want to go away for school because she's worried about being too far away from her brother and then also she worries about her mother's cancer. Her mother underwent 32 rounds of chemotherapy Maddie's freshman year, but she kept up with all of her grades and activities the entire time. A lot of her teachers didn't even know. I didn't know until she was in remission, until I had her as a sophomore. Her friends also have a lot of these same anxieties. And she said to me, when one of us falls, the rest of us step in to help, which sounds really great, but when you're just a kid and you're having to deal with your own anxiety in addition to your friend's anxieties, that's a lot to ask of our children. This is what she said. She says that her, her friends, she and her friends rarely do anything that you might consider fun. She said, we study either at the library or at someone's house and we eat food. That's about all they do. And this is how she sees her life, that she doesn't really have one. She says the consequences of all this pressure, she sees all of the consequences of this pressure. They learn about growth mindset, but anytime a smart kid or a kid who's been labeled smart comes up against something new or struggle, they can't deal with it and then they cheat. And so she says cheating is nonstop. Kids are so scared that they won't be able to do it themselves. It's all about the A, it's not about the learning. And that's her reality. Even though she said to me, I love learning. I love being challenged, but sometimes it's too much. So I asked her, what would you want the people that are kind of in charge of education to know? If you could say one thing to them, and I'll speak for you. And I explained who you are and what your role is, that you don't make laws, but you do make policy and you, you have a lot of influence. And this is what she wanted you to know. She said, the stress that you put on us from state tests, from laws, that's what she was talking about, is on top of the stress we already put on ourselves. The tests and the expectations get harder and harder every year and sometimes it's just too much for my age. She wanted you to know that she feels like we just want kids to be continuously smarter and better, better than previous generations and it's not fair and we shouldn't be comparing them to what came before. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a picture of what I, my students at my school in Rochester. I know we've heard from a lot of people from all over the state and all the meetings that have been here, it's been so fascinating, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, a window into some of my students and how we help them deal with this. So unless you have questions for me, I'm going to let Trisha go. Yes?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trisha Zeeman. I'm the Region 6 Teacher of the Year. I work in Holt. I got my bachelor's degree in Child Development and Elementary Education. And then I got my master's degree in Literacy from Walden my master's degree in Literacy from Walden University. Yeah, sure. So I started off my teaching career in Corona. I started off teaching kindergarten. I taught it for one year. I cried when I got the job because I was afraid of four and five-year-olds, but I ended up enjoying it very much. But but I love the age range of like second and third graders. So I moved to second grade, moved to third grade, I was there for eight years. And then I had lived in this area, and it was just becoming too much after I had children to commute that way. So I moved over to Holt, and I started in Holt as an RTI and Literacy Coordinator. I did that for two years, and I learned so much information that then I wanted to take everything that I had learned and apply it back in the classroom. So I went back into the classroom, I taught third grade for the last seven years, and then I've moved into an instructional coach position this year. I work in our five elementary buildings with K-4 teachers, and I work with some fifth and sixth grade teachers as well, coaching them on instruction. I have mentored four MSU interns over the course of my years in Holt, and I've been very active on building and district leadership teams. So some of my passions, I've discussed a little bit earlier today, they kind of fall into two buckets, students and teachers. As far as the left side, everything around there centers around having a classroom community, which means for me, I just love to be a positive role model for kids. I know that they're coming in with some really rough home environments. They don't get to have those conversations and express themselves sometimes, so I want to be something positive when they come into my classroom and be a good role model for them. A lot of them are lacking self-confidence in their abilities, so building them up, building positive relations with them, knowing that they can come to me with anything that they need. And then teaching them just how to overcome those challenges, whether it's academic, emotional, or social. Because I spoke to this earlier, this is probably the biggest challenge I see in education right now, and it's so worrisome to me. And I think Kara had talked about this, really good teachers are are burned out big time. Like, it's it's scary to talk to my colleagues and know that they're on the brink of wanting to quit when they're so amazing and they work so hard. And I almost feel like it's a secondary trauma for teachers because I talked to one of my coworkers last week, and the experiences that she had in one week were traumatic as a teacher, and then just coming off of that, she's just reeling like emotionally then to come back into the classroom and do it again. So another area that I feel pretty passionate about is empowering teachers. And a lot of that comes from just building their efficacy. We have a lot of cookie cutter canned programs, and I'm really working with teachers to use good strategies that they've learned in college or learned throughout their teaching career and not feel like they have to be robots following a program, but to bring some personality into it and bring the student interest. So this year, I'm working side by side with teachers, I'm doing a lot of modeling for them, planning with them, observing, providing feedback. And then I'm constantly reading and researching, you know, what works in education and what is successful to share with people, to grow my own learning, and to share out with.
Questions for our two Teachers of the Year? Our Region Six Teacher of the Year, our Michigan Teacher of the Year? Questions, thoughts? Dr. Pugh.
I think both of you, Kara, the presentation that you gave, I mean, it's so disheartening to see more kids who children who are committing suicide. You know, they have stress and pressures from all over. You know, I'm thinking about what we're doing to our children to have an outcome of a test score that we don't even know what that means. So thank you for putting that forward in that that way. And I'm sorry, I did not.
Trisha.
Trisha, in learning more about, you know, what it is that we can do to uplift our teachers, I was talking to an educator, and I kind of alluded to this during our last meeting when we were talking about the A through F and again, putting scores on schools. And I had just recently spoken with an educator who had spoken with three students separately. And I didn't say this then, but but that educator had to listen to three separate stories, totally unrelated, of young girls who have been raped, but were going to take tests, but having to address their their issues. So not only traumatizing for that educator and how do you uplift them, and then you know that they're going to, not only is that child still having to perform at school, but that educator still having to be judged, not based on what advising they were able to give them, how they were able to help that child to survive that day and continue to survive, you know, within a school year, but a test score is, you know, what they're going to be judged by. And how do we how do we support our nurturers of our children? And how do we get people to go into the profession when we see those educators who are taking these heavy blows but are still being called failures? Not only the kids, but the educators.
I think those are great questions because a lot of what we're talking about isn't really measurable, you know, of kids' growth socially or emotionally or confidence-wise. I can speak to my experience, one of the years that we got the new evaluation tool and, you know, I was highly effective in all the areas of the evaluation, and then I put my beginning of the year and end of the year data in, and I missed it by like two kids. It was devastating. Like, I cried at my computer because I felt like, wow, you know, like, there's nothing I can do. And it it makes you feel like a failure when you feel like you worked so hard for these kids and they've made, you look at how much growth they've made, and you're like, this is amazing, but it wasn't good enough, you know.
Thank you for your voices and for bringing the real world and reminding us what we should be talking about.
You very much. Next, we have a next item on today's agenda is approval of standards for the preparation of teachers of early childhood, general and special education. This set of standards will replace Michigan's current preparation standards for teachers of early childhood, PK, general and special education, and will inform program development and continuous improvement efforts at Michigan's educator preparation institutions. Board is being asked to approve the standards during today's meeting. Here to present to us this afternoon, Dr. Scott Kennischneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of the Office of Grade Start and Out-of-School Time Learning, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, and Ms. Kelly Cassidy, Education Consultant Officer of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Gentle people.
Great. So thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to come back and have another conversation regarding the standards for the preparation of teachers of early childhood, general and special education. As Dr. Rice said, this was before you, this topic was before you in the fall for discussion. It has gone off for public comment, and we are here today looking for approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Leah Breen.
Good morning. So first is why are we here reviewing new teacher preparation standards? Scott covered it a little bit, but just as a reminder, in 2018, we enacted certification changes here in Michigan. As a result of those changes to the certification structure, we are invoking changes to preparation so we can prepare teachers under the new structure that's ongoing. And as part of that, we keep bringing you the standards for teacher preparation that are revised in accordance with the new structure. And then subsequently, we are bringing, we are working on placement changes, so how teachers will be placed under this new certification and preparation system, and that public comment will begin in February, so you'll start hearing that in the field. In the old staffing system, as a reminder, teachers were appropriately placed when they were teaching in an area in which they were prepared and was listed on their certificate, and they could use, they could obtain additional flexibilities using permits. In the new staffing system, preparation does not equal certification, does not equal placement. So in the new system, thanks, sorry, teachers will also be appropriately placed when they are outside their area of preparation and certification in specific circumstances. Additional flexibilities will still be available with permits. And as a reminder, public comment will be open on this in February. So just giving you a little background of the four components of our new staffing system. And then shifting back to today's focus, as part of the preparation component of the system, we're here to talk about the new standards for birth to kindergarten.
So we've been here for a few different sets of standards. We were most recently here for the pre-K3 and pre-Six preparation standards, and we are making some of the same shifts throughout other areas. So some of these key shifts are really thinking about instructional practices in context. Not only can you do math, but what do you need to know in order to teach math? And thinking about those individual content knowledge and teaching skills that teachers need to have. And thinking about that integration between content and practice and making sure that those are deliberately taught in preparation programs with an intentional focus on individual student needs and making sure that teachers are prepared to address those individual needs within their classrooms, no matter what those needs are. And then also making sure that we have consistent embedded ongoing clinical experiences of a minimum of 600 hours within our preparation programs. When we update standards, we also update the assessment. And so these early assessments are have a focus on early literacy and the teaching of early literacy. They are non-compensatory, which means that you can't only pass one section and become a teacher. So under our current elementary test, you could pass just a portion of it and still pass the test. This one, you would need to demonstrate competence in early literacy and in early math in order to be able to pass. And it's also emphasizing pedagogy and emphasizing that content knowledge for teaching, making sure that the test is not just can you multiply, but can you teach multiplication, can you respond to student errors in multiplication? And then really thinking about that performance base. If a student does this, how would you respond? What would you do as a teacher as your next instructional move?
And these standards really do promote the department's overall priorities of the pre-Neil, pre-AJ, literacy and whole child foci that are currently being supported in many ways with the ecosystemic approach to education by re-envisioning the certification structure to support a whole child, a whole learner, and putting the focus back on the students and making sure teachers are prepared to meet their needs. And so the standards that were put out for public comment and are before you are really taking under or looking for the understanding that we are focusing standards to ensure that the profession and these early childhood teachers really have specialized training and that this really is a unique period of education that is a path to certification in early childhood that didn't exist prior related to infant toddler content for those individuals who are working with children in that period of life. But then we are also holding very high standards related to that period. Now, thinking about reducing barriers to a pathway ultimately to certification, early in the world of early childhood certificates, thinking about certifications where there are no cert degrees specifically for infant toddler providers, this gives those individuals an actual degree to work toward, where in preschool, there are areas of bachelor's in child development, bachelor's in preschool teaching, and so as well as teaching in elementary teacher certification with preschool teaching. So this is really opening up opportunities for more educators in the areas of birth through kindergarten. So this is related to our public comment piece that, or actually, the development timeline of the standards. So in the fall of 2018, the board passed the pre-K3 and pre-Six standards. Given that, part of that of the K-8 standards for elementary certification also had an early childhood endorsement piece to that called the ZS endorsement, more colloquially, we needed to think about what that meant for the early childhood profession. And given that, we took the time across office, across division, to decide to pull together stakeholders. We convened them in January of 2019 and started to look at what were we going to do related to that early childhood endorsement. And given that, we started discussing preparation standards. And thinking through that process and looking at the the overall package of the endorsement standards and what was actually in the now the pre-K3 standards and seeing what was left with infant toddler and a little bit early childhood special ed, we moved forward with development of these birth-to-kay standalone endorsement standards. As you know, we came through to the August board meeting in 2019 with draft standards that were prepared by writing group, and we went out for public comment in August to September. What we have now after public comment is a summary of that. Now, I did prepare a full summary report for the board, and I do have copies for you. It includes every public comment that was submitted for the standards. There are color copies for board members and black and white copies for others.
Supposed to read these before voting on them?
We're going to be doing a summary of the content in the So overall, the, as you'll see, we received 126 responses overall with 76 open-ended comments. That actually resulted in the overall support for these standards of 87.5% positive. With that, I do want to acknowledge that due to the the holiday break in December and this past week, I did make an error in not sending the Excel file of public comments. And so I do apologize to chairman and board members that I did not send that prior, recognizing this error in my my ways. Yesterday, I prepared this report, summary report, that does include every single comment verbatim in the Excel file, and and will follow up with the actual raw data file subsequent to this. But given the 87.5% public support of the standards, I was moving forward with the presentation today. And on this next slide here, this actually does showcase the respondent roles of those individuals who did respond. And related to, you see, the greatest participation were those teacher practitioners, parents, and other interested citizens of the state of Michigan, as well as faculty and administrators were the second largest group who participated in public comment. And then this is ultimately the grade levels in which those individuals were associated So to dive deeper into the actual comments in the document that you received, a track changes copy as well as the final edited version, the track changes copy did have the comments also attached to them. Kelly will go over the more specific edits that were the result.
So as Richard had mentioned, the survey actually really started with that demographic information, trying to find out who was commenting, to be able to look at the roles, to be able to look at which region they were from, to really learn about, are we getting a pretty solid representation of Michigan to be able to respond to the comments? And we did get a variety of roles. They were mostly focused in the birth to kindergarten area, which is not surprising. They were scattered around Michigan with some areas with more responses than others, which is also not surprising when you think about the distribution of our population. And the first question that they were really asked about the standards themselves was, do you agree that the proposed standards for the preparation of teachers of early childhood, general and special education, birth to kindergarten, will improve the preparation of early childhood teachers? And that's where the statistics that Richard had mentioned came from. 87.5% said yes, these standards will improve the preparation of teachers. So then we asked them one more step. Is there a specific section that you would like to respond to? Would you like to respond to the prior comments just on the foundational section, or just on the special education section, or just on the relation? on the special education section or just on the relationships? And so then they were given an opportunity to say, will this section improve the preparation of teachers in early childhood? And if yes, why? If no, why not? And that's where we saw most of our comments. So overall, the themes were very specific edits. We had a lot of comments that said, please change standard number to say this instead. All of those comments were given back to our drafting team to review and respond to, to consult research, to think about their expertise and their experiences, and to make a determination together on whether to modify the standard based on that comment or not. They were all reviewed, they were all addressed, and all considered in that way. We also had several comments asking about who is this for, or could this can be used in early on, or is this designed for home visitors, or couldn't be these be used there? So that's the placement questions that we really have to make sure as we roll this out, people understand the answer to. So making sure that people understand that these are entry-level standards. They are going to provide teachers what they need to know to be able to begin their first day on the job. And in any program or situation, they will need some additional training and some understanding in order to understand the context that they are working in, whether that be a specific program or whether it be a kindergarten classroom. And so we did beef up some of the introduction, and you may have noticed that in some of the track changes of the standards, where we started defining more clearly about that. And then some of the comments were also about teacher salary, benefits, and respect. So there were a lot of comments that expressed concern about the requirement of a bachelor's degree in teacher certification for some of these teachers, which this actually hasn't changed. This has not increased the requirements. It does increase the rigor of the programs, but it doesn't increase the requirements. So it maintains the requirement of a certification or an optional credential. And then there were concerns about teacher salary and benefits and respect that are ongoing and have been there as we continue talking about it. So as I had mentioned, one of those concerns was really about the who needs this, or who would want this, or what would this be marketable for? And so we think that graduates of this program would be well-prepared to work in a great start readiness program as a lead teacher. They would be well-prepared to work in an early childhood special education program. They could work in early on, they could work start, they could work in pre-kindergarten or in kindergarten. And again, in each of those areas, they would need some contextual training to understand some of the programs. There are also some alternative options to teach in some of these settings. For example, in kindergarten, you could have the PK 3 certificate. In great start readiness, you could have a bachelor's in child development. And so from here, we know that the rollout is important and some of the other things that we got out of public comment was actually things that we can use, to be, resources that we can use with our institutions to be able to roll them out. And so planning a series of webinars to be able to provide institutions with some materials that they may not currently have to support the implementation of these standards. As Richard said, this is the first time that the early childhood endorsement does not rely on the content of elementary school and is actually filled with early childhood content. And so that is an adjustment for our programs. And they're going to need assistance with implementation, developing resources. So we'll, we're working on a series of webinars, helping them with the shifts and understanding the standards and unpacking them. We will start accepting applications in the fall and that'll be the first window that it's available. Candidates would then enter the programs next fall and exiting around 2026.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. I appreciate the contextualization early and then the more specific later, later on. May I please have a motion to approve the standards, the preparation of teachers of early childhood, general and special education, birth to kindergarten? Ms. Ramos Montini moved. Do I have a second?
Support.
Dr. Pritchett, second. Is there any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
So I'm drawn to, and I am disappointed that we're just getting these comments. But I'm drawn quickly, as I quickly tried to leave through here, page 26 at the bottom. One of the comments says, will you be offering opportunity for preschool teachers like myself to possibly get years' experience to get a degree in this? It's frustrating for me. I graduated from Adrian College, bachelor's in human services, minor in childhood, early childhood. At that time, a major in early childhood was so rare, was rare, so I went with the closest thing, knowing I wanted to teach preschool. Now with my degree, I'm not qualified to teach a GSRP classroom, even though I have 20 years' experience teaching with the degree at the time, was what was needed to work with preschool-aged children. And she goes, or here she goes on. I understand I could get a master's. So is this true?
So this is thinking about the specific bachelors that are allowed for program funding. And one of the things that the standards drafting group, they were all bringing stories like this to the table. They were all coming and saying that this person may be able to teach in one early childhood program, but not in GSRP. Or they're allowed to teach in GSRP because they have a bachelor's in early childhood, but they can't teach in kindergarten. And so looking at some of those was really one of the goals of the stakeholder group was to be able to remove some of those barriers, to be able to add on to some of these stackable credentials, to move from one program to another, to be able to build on that education that they already have without having another entire degree program. So one of the things that was happening before is you'd have the pupil with a bachelor's in early childhood, but then to go into an elementary preparation program was almost an entire degree program. I mean, you'd be talking about 40 or 50 credits to try to move from a bachelor's you already have into essentially a second bachelor's. And so they really wanted to be able to look at what are the skills and requirements that stretch across these grade bands to be able to remove some of those barriers, knowing that the children are so similar, have distinct differences, but also the core skills that a teacher needs to have to teach in preschool and kindergarten are essentially the same skills. And so how can we bridge some of that so that these teachers that have these problems can be able to add on a credential or a certification or a additional grade band without taking on an entire degree program?
So, okay, you didn't answer my question. So is this, is this true that this person is employed in teaching and then after these pass, he or she will no longer be able to?
No, that's not. It is not that after they pass, they will no longer be able to. It's that situations like this where they can't.
So in that situation, nothing has changed for them, but what we've done is we've solved the situation moving forward for others. So once they get this credential, they can teach in any of those programs.
She's, so was she mistaken?
So currently, she is not eligible to teach in a GSRP classroom. The passage of these standards will not change that one way or another for this person. The State School Aid Act prescribes what degrees are allowable for lead teachers in GSRP. We don't determine that in the department. So there are two.
So, okay. So are there any, is there anybody in the state of Michigan that is currently allowed to be teaching or is teaching that after these pass will not be able to?
No.
So when we enact new teacher preparation standards, changes the certification, we grandparent everybody in proceeding. We never take away from our educators.
That's correct.
And then some of these standards, so we're talking about student needs of like six-month-olds in these? I mean, is, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that they couldn't teach a six-month-old unless they had a bachelor's or a certificate?
There are varying degree requirements based on early childhood and which part of early childhood you're talking. So it does not mean you are required to have a teaching certificate to work with a six-month-old.
To teach in a school for...
Not a requirement. It may be a privilege that somebody is looking for, but it is not a requirement.
And these standards don't, I mean, they, some of them address six-month-olds, but it's not required to adhere to these standards?
So for an individual teaching a third, three-year-old preschool program, it's, it's important for them to understand child development from prenatal through six months old, through three years old. And it becomes relevant for that program of which the certification might be a requirement depending on funding. But it's not a requirement for all programs. So a daycare facility may choose to hire somebody with this credential, but they may not require this credential for their daycare center. But this would demonstrate a set of skills and proficiencies that they may want for that person.
And then I'd like to ask this question when we pass these standards. If we don't pass these standards, what would happen?
I think we, it would depend on the reason you chose not to pass the standards. If they need more work, we would go back to the stakeholder group to...
I mean, I think it's going to pass. But I'm just saying, if, today versus tomorrow, what's the difference? Like what, I mean, what would happen if, yeah, what would happen if, for whatever reason, a majority said we don't like them and voted them down?
It would delay implementation of a B-2K certificate and we would continue with our existing standards, which does not have this certification in place.
A B-2K certificate that's not required for anything? I mean, that's, that, you know, I mean, that's somebody's doing right now that doesn't have to get it.
We'd get more feedback, like the one that you pointed out in your packet, of people who were maybe prepared for one thing but not others. So we would lose the option of better preparing them for multi-roles of differently funded programs.
Okay, thank you.
There are people that are permitted to teach in a Head Start program that aren't permitted to teach in a Great Start Readiness program or, or in a, in a public kindergarten program. And it's a little bit bewildering why that is the case. You go from three-year-olds or four-year-olds to five-year-olds. You're, you're in roughly the same developmental band and for whatever reason or reasons, you're not able to. This would address that issue and in a pretty seamless, in a pretty seamless way. I'm sorry, Mr. Lauer?
I would just say also, this is in terms of taking the longer view to child outcomes, third grade reading, high school graduation for the long, long view and thinking about their earliest years being infant toddler, having the impact and thinking about the professionals who are working with those children, with their parents in, in the home or in a center-based care. Never before have there been standards in place for the professionals who work with infants and toddlers, a much less a teacher certification set of standards for professionals working with infants and toddlers. We've had them at the pre-K level. We've utilized the elementary certification with an early childhood endorsement for that purpose. And in some cases, in the, in the area of early on, which is IDA Part C, some of those personnel utilize, again, the ZS endorsement for that purpose in home visiting. But again, those were utilizing what existed, what was available to them. This has been developed with those professionals in mind, with the specialized training, with the rigor in place to be able to ensure that parents, children continue to get the supports and get supports earlier so that ultimately they're more ready for school. We can, we can have a better outcome for school readiness, a better outcome for third grade reading proficiency, better outcome for high school graduation on the long view. And so Leah spoke to the kind of the operational mechanical pieces, but thinking about child outcomes, where we want to be for Michigan in top 10 and 10 and so forth, I'm thinking about not passing these from a child's point of view and the state's point of view, I think has greater ramifications on outcomes for children.
It's also a teacher of respect. So in...
Professionalism.
In infant toddler programs, there was not a certification option. And the only way you could be certified at early childhood would be to be an elementary school teacher first. So this provides a specific early childhood teaching certificate.
Thank you for sharing that. And Ms. Breen, maybe if you could distinguish, because I think there may be a little bit of confusion about standards to which you are referring in this presentation versus standards for someone who does childcare for, for a living?
So there are, for, well, you should probably respond to this. For childcare, there are standards around the childcare center and safety and health and...
So those are licensing standards.
They are.
So those are basic health and safety standards related to the facility, fire code, operational code, building safety. Those are housed at Lara. And those are facilities. Those are ensuring that the environment and minimal, minimal human standards are in place for caregiving related to the staffing piece.
But the point is, is that to serve in childcare does not require this certificate, nor will it require this certificate?
No, it does not.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Fekto?
I thought I heard somebody say it depended on the funding source, like so the, so for GSRP, what certification do you need now and what will it be after this? It's the same?
So in statute, in the State School Aid Act, for a lead teacher, there are a couple options currently, and this applies for all settings, whether it be an LEA, a PSA, or a community-based setting. You can have a bachelor's in child development or early childhood education with a specialization in preschool teaching. Or you can have an elementary certification currently with that early childhood endorsement. Now that there is a pre-K 3 endorsement and we need to go back to legislature, have them amend the law to include that as an option, because again, we grandfather in all the existing. We don't take away, we add in. So currently, there are two bachelor degree options and the teacher certification option. And if you pass this option, there will be a second certification option. It will be the pre-K, it will be the existing elementary certification with a ZS, as well as we will add in two new ones, the pre-K 3 as well as the ZS, or the birth-to-K, if you pass this.
So this woman, who went to Adrian College, because hers wasn't one of those current options, she can't teach in human services.
And so with her degree in human services, with a minor in early, in early childhood, the bachelor's in human services, the law provides for a compliance, a two-year compliance plan. She could, if they had a problem finding appropriately credentialed teachers in that area for their programs, she could be employed and put on a compliance plan for up to two years. The law provides for that.
She'd have to get a degree in...
She would have to go back to school and the minor in early childhood could be turned into a bachelor's in early childhood, probably with just additional coursework to get it into a bachelor's. And that would be acceptable. That would be one path. It would not be required into the certification route because we do allow for bachelor's in early childhood.
Head Start has different requirements?
The federal Head Start program has different requirements.
And they still have to have a degree?
They allow for an associate's as well as a bachelor's degree.
How much does they, how much do these two, these professions pay on average?
That varies. It's, early childhood profession, the compensation aspect is based, there's wide variance. On average, probably for lead teachers, probably about $20,000 rough estimate below their public pre-K years.
So there are, there are some districts that will pay on a flat hourly basis. There are others that will include pre-kindergarten teachers on the regular salary scale that's negotiated within the district. There, there is a tremendous variance across the state. That variance can, can be substantial within a county. It can be literally different across a street from one district to the other. We had a district in our county that paid $18 an hour. We had another district in our county, hours, that put teachers, pre-kindergarten teachers on the regular salary schedule. And the difference between the two, I mean, you do the, you do the math multiplying by the number of hours that a teacher's employed during a year, but 18, 18 hours times 1,098, a little bit more than that, put in, throw in 50 to 100 additional hours, and you're, you're talking about quite a bit less than we were paying our pre-kindergarten teachers. They started at 40 and they went up to the, our max was 73, 74.
But the funding comes from GSRP, right? The money for the program?
No. The, yes and no. So some of the funding comes from GSRP. If, if you are paying $18 an hour, you are, you, you may, you may be funding your entire GSRP program with that 3625 per slot, per half-day slot. If on the other hand, you are paying on your teacher's salary, that 3625 per half-day slot is not sufficient to fully... slot is not sufficient to fully meet your, to fully meet your need. Ms. Snyder?
My understanding is the pay is pretty low.
The, the pay, the pay can be pretty low in a number of districts. And then in other districts, again, there's no difference between a pre-kindergarten teacher and a, and a kindergarten teacher, an eighth-grade teacher, 12th-grade teacher.
Charge.
That's right. Yes. Ms. Snyder?
So, back to the example of this woman. So she, what, she was sort of teaching or caring under Head Start, which is the Department of Human Services umbrella, correct?
Head Start is Department of Education.
Okay. I mean, um-
It did move though.
Recent.
From there to here.
Yes.
Well, that's the Head Start collaboration.
So, but she would be eligible to teach and get paid underneath that budget? Is that what pays her?
So the-
It's also the program. So there'll be some schools will have a Head Start program that is for our students. But it's not just about, like, where the funding source is, it's also about how it is organized.
Are there any dollars coming from HHS?
State or federal level?
Both.
So Head Start is federally funded directly to local communities.
Right.
It does not flow through the state.
So no one who was teaching or caring for anyone at any point in time in our system was ever funded under those dollars?
Well-
I, like, I have no idea, that's why I'm asking.
I can ask and get back to you?
Okay. I'm just curious, because this shift, which is kind of what I talked about some months ago, from services that might be provided P through K, were within that department. So are those dollars kind of coming with them into the education system as we make these changes? Is kind of what I'm getting at. And then, another question. You can go, I may have to bring it again.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, what I was going to speak to, I looked down and, and see that one of the teachers made a comment about it. So I'm going to read a, a small piece of that on page 30. It says, "My concern is Head Start teachers make very little money. I know some start at $9 an hour and some are making $12 to $13 in, in our area. You can't expect them to have a bachelor's degree and pay these wages. The wages are the biggest complaint I hear." And I know I reported before from NASB about the wages being comparable to fast food So if they are required to have a degree or a certificate, are they, are we going to increase those wages?
Let's, let's back up. First of all, we are not requiring people who teach in Head Start with these standards to have this degree. You could have this, you could be certificated under this set of standards and teach in a Head Start program, but you do not have to be certificated under this set of standards.
So they're not required to get a certificate?
No, ma'am. They are not.
I know they're not now, but I'm saying, that's not what's your proposal.
Not. Slide 17, which is, I think, where we, we are kind of distilled to, is a slide that says, "Here are some teacher groups, some groups of teachers that could use this certificate, but with respect to Head Start, do not have to use this certificate." To the earlier point, that you can teach in Head Start with an associate's degree. You can't get that certificate with an associate's degree. So I apologize for that confusion.
Okay.
But your point about compensation stands, that irrespective of whether you are teaching in a Head Start program, a GSRP program, a, a public kindergarten program, you are not to be making that wage. Not acceptable. Other, other questions? Ms. Snyder?
And then, so these standards do apply for kindergarten teachers. So you could get it and you could teach preschool or kindergarten. And then on, on page 26, it talks about literacy and wording and math, that the bar is high.
For the, for what the teacher needs to know in order to teach that grade level.
Yep.
Other, other questions or comments, thoughts by, by board members? Ms. Fecto, please.
So I know there's something, we don't control the purse strings and what people get paid. So I think it's just for, maybe if somebody is, I think that's an issue. But I, I do think it's good to look at, you know, what would be good for, you know, good practices and good curriculum and ideas for, and having trained people who, you know, are real, that have that expertise and building that, that knowledge and that base. I, I think that in and of itself is, is valuable. My fear is just that the people won't do it because there's no monetary, it's not affordable to do it, because of spend money and then come to a job where they can't, you know, can't pay their student loan or can't, can't do that. So, but I, I think that the idea and putting together thoughts of what's the best way to teach and, and, you know, making it practical for, given the schools where they are, where the students are, what's, how to use that information. I'm feel, I'm feeling there's going to be, once it gets, if it gets, and when it gets implemented, there's going to be more feedback on, wow, this is just really impossible to implement, or this is really difficult in this context, or, you know. I've heard already from some people who are in the GSRP, my former babysitter, one of them, saying that it's just, you know, the standards are, she just feels are really hard and, not that they're not good, but they're just sort of grappling with how to do it. And so I'm assuming that at some point, there will be feedback from the field to, and adjustments maybe based on that feedback.
One thing is the GSRP program standards, about the requirements, the individual GSRP program. One of the things that they're talking about there, this would be for their colleges to be able to say what the teachers need to do, so that they are prepared to work under those program standards. This would be a recent update to better prepare them to understand those standards. So that, there is a specific standard in here about understanding those GSRP, better prepared to do that under these.
All right. Thanks for that clarification.
Other, other thoughts or questions, comments? Dr. Kay, any, any words of wisdom for us?
Appreciate, again, the collaborative effort between Vanessa's staff and our staff. I think that's another great, great piece of work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Breen, anything?
No. Thank you for your time and your support with this initiative. And I think that educators will appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Board, anything more? Doing nothing? All in favor? I'm sorry?
Oh, I, as far as just, I mean, I think it's, I've voiced in the past concerns about government-funded programs like this for birth babies through kindergarten. And so I've, I've expressed those in the past, but while I'll be quoting the way I do.
Can, can we just, I, I appreciate that. I would like to clarify though, because the, the early programs are, are pretty highly specialized programs. If we could, Dr. Kay, maybe if you could give us a brief tour, Mr. Lauer, of, of what we mean by the earliest of the programs. I'm not talking about GSRP, I'm talking about earlier still.
Sure. So some of them are listed right behind you. Obviously, we talked about GSRP, which is our state-funded preschool. ECSC is Early Childhood Special Edit. That also pertains primarily to preschoolers, but there's a transition there from when students transition out of early on into ECSC. Early on would be the one that would come to mind for me. Early on services children zero to three. Some days and instances, literally right after they're born. Referrals are made to early on by parents, they can be made by grandparents, they can be made by physicians or other providers. Those are made to a central collection number. That central collection number then contacts the ISDs in which the referral was made, and somebody from the ISD then begins to contact the parents and provide those particular services. And services are rendered for a variety of reasons. We serve about 22,000 students, not students yet, but youngsters a year, 10,000 at any one time. With this notion of providing those services early on is certainly going to save us in the long run. And though I would argue the more training and preparation that folks get, certainly I can only help with that.
But it's early intervention to prevent later need and later cost, and additional need and additional cost.
And the number, referring to my prior experience in the field, was in Ingham, 66% of kids who received services through early on, age zero to three, did not go on to receive special education services.
But ended up being a preventative?
That's correct.
Okay. And the mandate associated there with?
Uh, the mandate-
With early on. Where does it come from? Where does it come from?
It's the federal government. It's a federal mandate. It is IDA Part C. You hear us often talk about IDA, while there are IDA A, B, C, and D, and talk about that too, but won't today, but zero to three is also, is referred to as IDA Part C. So it's a federal law, federal protection for our students.
And it's meant to prevent-
That's correct.
Larger than otherwise would, otherwise would be numbers in special education later on?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from board? I appreciate that clarification. Thank you very much. Hearing no more questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstention, Mr. McMillan? Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. Next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, Chairperson of the Board's Legislative Committee, will you please provide your report? We also have with, with us today, and we appreciate her presence, Ms. Caroline Leethan, our legislative liaison.
Okay, everybody has a copy?
You have it?
Yes. Okay. Well, we see in front of us the report by the Legislative Committee. We met on Tuesday, December 23rd, and here at the Hana Building. The Legislative Committee is composed of myself, Lupe Ramos Montini, and Dr. Judy Pritchett, and vulnerable Nikki Snyder. And the liaisons are Martin Marty Eklie and Caroline Leetham, Stephen McGrow, Degrow, and Marilyn Schneider. And a lot of great advice and guidance from our Superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice. We appreciate your, your support. Okay. What I would like to do is for us to look at our phones. We sent you the letter that we put together for the Detroit schools. And if you can open your phones and, and we will go over this briefly and see if you have any other input, and then you can let us know if you would like to sign the letter. And Marilyn is going to put it in the format that's, that's going to be in appropriate format. Michelle and I worked on this letter, and if you look at the fir, well, if you don't mind, I'll read it. And, but the first paragraph, we deleted the last two sentences, so that paragraph is going to end with privacy of immigrant students. So it's going to read, "It was indeed a pleasure to have Ms. Sharice Butler at our monthly State Board of Education meeting on December 10th, 2019. The DPSCD Sanctuary District Policy was introduced to the Board explaining how this new policy cements clear guidelines for the protection, security, and privacy of immigrant students. A quote recorded in chalk beat showed the commitment you have to all the students when you said, 'We have drawn a line in the sand to say that when children come into our schools, they are safe.' Superintendent Nikolai Viti. We, the undersigned State Board of Education members, applaud the courage you have demonstrated in the passage of this policy. We're proud to stand with you as we educate every student who comes into the doors of our school buildings. Our commitment continues. Lupe Ramos Montini and Michelle Fecto.'" And then we're going to see, see this letter to all the other board members of the Detroit Public Schools. So you have the letter before you. If you would like to also sign with Michelle and I, your name will be included with the letter that Marilyn will put together.
So we just respond to this email?
Yes. You can just respond to this email. Yes.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Apart from the letter though, is there any other aspect of your report besides the resolution on Drive Safe?
Okay. Would, would you like to take the anti-bullying and what occurred with that?
We discussed whether or not the Board would like to have a further discussion on updating the SBE model anti-bullying policy. It was originally updated and approved on November 9th, 2010.
Okay. And then a memo was sent to local districts to remind them of the state law, share the state Board's model policy with local districts, inform local districts that the state Board will be reviewing the, a model policy, and to provide links to tools and resources for local districts. So that's what has occurred with the anti-bullying legislative update.
Just a note, that, that memo goes out tomorrow to local school districts.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then with the changes of the Michigan Merit Curricula, the Senate Bills 600 and 601 have been reported out of the Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee and are awaiting action by the full Senate. Another issue that we talked about. And, and then we have Senate Bills 631 and 632, Drive Safe, and put your state Senate Bill 631 and 632, and identical bills by the House 5192 and 5193. And a resolution has been drafted by the State Board's Legislative Committee that supports these bills and will be discussed at the State Board's monthly meeting on January the 14th, which is today. The draft resolution can be found on page eight of this document. So we could go back to the document, which is at the very back. And now I would like to make a motion to, to accept the resolution in support of Drive Safe licenses for all legislation.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Dr. Pugh, so motion by Ms. Ramos Montini, second by Dr. Pugh, discussion associated there with Mr. McMillan.
Before I get to the four amendments that I emailed everybody about an hour ago, I'm just looking at the, the legislation, and from what I'm gathering, on page 14, section 307(c)(2(c), somebody would get a temporary operator's license pending the verification of any document's authenticity. So I'm trying to make it clear that, so somebody's, what they're submitting may not even be right, but they're still going to get a temporary operator's license. So that seems troubling to me. The second item is on page 15, sections 307(c)(3(c), and it says, "One of the, one of the documents that would be, let's see, acceptable documents for purposes of proving identity or Michigan residency must include, like, a lease agreement and, or a rental agreement or other proof of Michigan residence." I mean, I think anybody could sign a rental agreement, doesn't mean it's legitimate, first of all, it doesn't mean that it's signed by anybody. I mean, I, I don't know if that's really much of a threshold. I have, I generally have a problem with all the, I mean, with this legislation and the vast majority of citizens do as well, but- majority of citizens do as well, but I, you know, I always took the tack that when I was in the minority in the legislature, to try to make legislation I disagreed with at least a little bit better. So that's why I'll be offering amendments to the legislation that I think that are important. I mean, they deal with safety, two of them deal with safety of our residents, one deals with the integrity of the voting system, and one with making sure that we're safeguarding taxpayer monies. So I think they're all important.
Fair enough. Other comments? We'll work our way through the proposed amendments in a moment. I would like to get general comments on the table before we move into the specific-
I have a question for Tom.
Yes, please.
You said most people. Is that data, or are you going?
Yeah, I mean, just-
Where's the data from?
Just polling, I mean, just if you Google, you'll find out kind of polls saying that majority of Democrats oppose this stuff, so, yeah, I mean, vast majority of Republicans, but-
What was, driver's license?
For people undocumented immigrants.
Is that national data, or is that Michigan data?
It's national, but it said even swing voters, by 75 to 25 oppose it, moderates.
So additional comments, Ms. Ramos Montini?
Okay, we have to take note that there's about 16 states, New Jersey being the last one, and there's another one, what is the other one that's working on licenses for all?
Indiana.
Indiana. Indiana is working on licenses for all. So that's going to be about 17 states that are cognizant of the fact that this will provide safety in the roads, and you have that document that was sent to me by the makers of the motion, I mean, of the legislative proposal, and you will see all the different pros that this bill will provide. And you will also see all the supporting organizations from Michigan in the two sides of this document. So therefore, there is a lot of support for this legislation, and there are many reasons why this is a good move for our state, not only for the safety of our under-documented immigrants, but also safety for us as drivers, and also it will bring a big chunk of money, as was indicated in this other document that was passed by another individual that this public comment. So there's going to be a lot of revenue, there's going to be safety, and the farmers need the workers, the restaurants need the workers, there's a lot of different identities where many people don't want to do that work, and these under-documented citizens will take those jobs. So the two senators that proposed the bill, then a letter of support to the resolution that we are discussing now, so there is a lot of support in the data that I have been gathering, and also the people that I have been talking to. So, you know, we differ as to where this documentation is coming from, but it's just a real common sense, and we, as a body here in the State Board of Education, have to, we talked about many different things this morning, but I loved a lot of the things that you had to say about environments for students. We talked about there's trauma, and there's mental health, there's, we want to have satisfaction with the teacher, we want to have satisfaction with the parents, grandparents, guardians, we want to have satisfaction with the district, we want to have satisfaction with the community. We want to take a hold of those things that students are experiencing before they come to the doors of our schools, and the anxieties that go through, you heard testimonies today, the anxieties that these students go through every single day because they're American citizens, but their parents are under documented, and there's always that fear, there's always that fear. We heard what it is doing, this fear is causing parents not to be engaged in the students' activities at school, and that's, we all know that that is a component that helps students thrive in education when their parents are involved. So, you know, a lot of the things that we talked about this morning are very relevant to the students that we're talking about with this resolution. A social, healthy environment, health, emotional, all of those things are very important to all students, and we are responsible for these students that are coming to our schools right now, and this immigration system that we have is broken, so we're going to continue having immigrants. Our country is made up of immigrants, and they all came for different reasons, religion, reasons, they came for opportunities, some were brought without their consent, the African-Americans, you go to that history, they were brought in a very brutal way to this country. So we all came here many different ways, and so if you lived in a country where it was, they're going to kill my family, I'm going to walk all these miles to go seek a different opportunity. If you look at that, look at what courage it takes for them to decide, I'm going to leave this area because the gangs are going to take my children. Literally, my Salvadorian friends say, teachers disappear, they just disappear. There are just so many different obstacles, so many struggles that people go through to come to this country, the land of opportunity, and when we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we say liberty and justice for all, justice for all, and those are the students that we're talking about here. We want to give them justice because they are our responsibility as members of this State Board of Education.
Thank you very much. President Albridge.
So I understand some of the concerns that Tom's raising. Voting, for example, is actually addressed in the bill. There's, it explicitly says that just because somebody gets a license does not mean that they have a right to vote, and I believe it's already illegal to try to register and to try to vote if you are not a citizen. So I'm glad to see that that's in the bill. The one argument that sways me in favor of the resolution is the safety issue. The idea that there are individuals who have not gone through driver's training, have not gone through a system where it's ensured that they know how to drive, are in essence driving to and from school zones, to me is really, really concerning. And I would rather see a system where someone has to go through a check and balance to ensure that they actually know what they're doing when they're operating a multi-ton vehicle around a bunch of children, than one in which that is not even an option. So for me, that is the issue that sways me in favor of supporting this, because I think it's a safety issue, not just for them, and not just for their kids, but for everybody's children, and everybody.
Thank you very much. Other Board members on the broad question of the resolution, and then again, we'll wend our way down through the individual amendments. Dr. Pew, Ms. Fecto?
That was my question. Tom, did I understand you to say that you sent some?
Yeah, to y'all.
We are, we are, we're going to distribute them in one minute.
Okay.
We're going to talk broad, and then we're going to talk narrow, okay? Broad comments about the resolution before we go amendment by amendment. Ms. Fecto?
Two of my daughters are married to young men with DACA status, so I've become personally immersed in the fears of what's going on within that community. One thing that sort of motivates me is that, you know, there's laws that say if you have a criminal record, that you can be subject to deportation, and otherwise, there's, you know, there's sort of a laid-back attitude, but it's, they're saying, well, we're just deporting people with these records, and driving without a license is a setup to get a record to then move it to deportation, and I'm thinking, you know, it does not seem like a well-thought-out policy. It seems like the people who don't like immigrants, or want to get them deported, and I'm not saying anyone here, I'm just saying that the idea of using that to be the criminal conviction, because then, you know, Lord, God forbid, if I was, I'd be deported long ago, I've got several driving violations, but that just seems blatantly unfair, just blatantly unfair, and sort of a way to target, unfairly target, because, and get folks deported, whether they've been here and are upstanding citizens, and doing everything right, but because of, but for that, they're going to be deported. So I think we need to decriminalize that and provide people with driver's licenses, and then also pass a policy to deal with our immigration in a forthright manner, not sort of backdoor punitive setups, so.
Dr. Pew?
You know, just to add, I will definitely be supporting the resolution, and thank you, Lupe, for bringing this to our attention. You know, one of the things that we study in public health is called the Latino or Hispanic Paradox, and we talk about how, and I think someone may have brought it up here, well, at least it brought it to my, to mind, where we have family members, or we have our Latino or Hispanic brothers and sisters who come to this country, and they come here healthier than after a few months or years, and that's because of the stressors that they experience due to the discriminatory or the pressures that are placed upon them. And one thing that we know, when we talk about toxic stress, when we talk about trauma, you know, we cannot negate how that impacts our children and their academic outcomes, and we can show that, how that type of stress gets under the skin and ends up manifesting in ways that we can't even begin to speak about. So definitely seeing why it's relevant in many ways to the conversations that we have here.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tilly, Ms. Fecto, yeah?
I kind of wish we could actually broaden it, it's not just an issue, I feel, it's not just an issue that immigrant families face, families in poverty face it, because, and thank God, they repealed the driver's responsibility fee, but there are a lot of families that can't afford, once they lose their license, for tickets or whatever reasons, to get their license back, and they're going through the same issues, trying to transport their children without a license.
There's no question, and that is a concern in many urban districts across the state. Other comments on the general resolution, before we wend our way through the specific, not the time for public comment, I apologize. Any questions or concerns about the general, before we move into the specific resolutions, the specific amendments?
I just wanted to point out that there were, licenses for all were issued until 2008. So we have to keep that in mind, because they didn't work then, and then new government came in and did away with the licenses for all. So we want to resurface, renew those licenses for all as we had before.
Within the state?
Within the state, yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you for that, thank you for that clarification. Hearing no one else sharing broadly within the Board, why don't we consider, without objection, Amendment Three initially, our Board President raised that amendment first. I will read each of the amendments, if you could distribute-
I'll move it.
Please, yeah, if you could distribute, actually, if we could distribute those so that everybody has a hard copy.
I was just making a reference to the actual bill.
Understood, no, I respect that. The amendment reads, I understand Mr. McMillan is moving, please, go ahead.
Okay, my amendment, amend the last paragraph by inserting after the bill number, so it would read, right after the bill number, quote, "As long as the bills are amended to make it a felony for those who obtain a non-commercial license and/or personal identification card under this legislation to attempt to vote or register to vote, and to make it a felony for any person to assist them to vote or attempt to vote in an election in the state of Michigan."
So moved by Mr. McMillan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Snyder, do we have any discussion associated there with?
Sure, I would like-
Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I mean, I saw that in the legislation, it just says that it won't, that they're not allowed to vote, but there's no penalties for it, and as a matter of fact, the California Department of Motor Vehicles in October of 18 admitted that they had registered 1,500 non-eligible people, including non-US citizens, to vote in a six-month span. And so even though they're not supposed to, you know, there are, people are registering, they are potentially voting, I would imagine that that happens as well, so this, I just think there needs to be penalties, and penalties for anybody trying to encourage them as well. That's, just trying to keep the integrity of the voting system in Michigan.
Fair enough. Any other discussion on the amendment, Amendment Number Three, which has been moved and seconded? Ms. Fecto, President Albridge?
So did anybody actually vote that was registered? I can't imagine if they were actually allowed to-
I don't know, but if they don't, then nobody's going to have a felon, going to be, get a felony, so I guess this wouldn't hurt if there's nobody that's going to do it.
Sometimes people register, have people sign petitions, and they just get anybody, but I just wondered if the process is so forward that they were able to vote. So, yeah, I don't know if it's a, I just want to think if it's a real problem, because I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, people saying things like this, and that not being, not saying that they're not registered, but that they actually voted, and not being substantiated, or actually the guy who said it was found to be lying again, but, sorry. So I just want to make sure it's not a lot of fear-mongering around that, but not saying that your concerns are not legitimate, just that I think there's been a lot of, a lot of talk that's unsubstantiated, that's all, yeah.
President Albridge?
I'm trying to find, I believe it's already a felony to do this in Michigan. A person who violates the section is guilty of a felony punishable by imprisonment for not more than five years, or a fine for not more than $1,000, or both. So I think what you're stipulating is already law, if I'm reading this correctly. I'm reading under election law, crimes, state of Michigan.
Please.
I personally don't feel that this amendment is necessary. I don't like the tone of it, I don't like, I concur with Cassandra, it's already a law, I don't think we need it in our resolution. So I will be voting no on this amendment. So I will be voting no on this amendment.
Thank you very much.
Well, let me just to make one comment on that.
Please, I want to enter that process. It will take me two minutes.
It really, it really, from our perspective, you know, it's a board, it's a board debate. There is a public comment specifically for the opportunity. I apologize.
So to qualify for voter registration in Michigan, you must be a U.S. citizen, be a resident of Michigan and of the city or township in which you're registering, and be at least 18 years, 18 years old, and not currently imprisoned for a felony offense.
Not currently imprisoned.
Doesn't say any penalties.
We were needing a lot of time.
Does not. Any other discussion associated with this particular amendment? Dr. Pugh?
I guess I would just have a concern. I mean, there are so many mistakes that are made with registrations and, or at least that's said. But I don't know if I would want it to be, I wouldn't necessarily support it being a felony. And if it's already in the law, then it's already, in the, in the language, then I guess I would just leave it at that. I guess I could understand the concerns if there are, I mean, there could be mistakes made. I mean, and I would hate for that to end up in, be in a felony.
Fair enough. Anything else on this amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the amendment, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions associated therewith? So the amendment fails. One, six, one.
Just to, can I just clarify? I found it, and it's actually, it is a felony punishable by imprisonment for not more than four years or a fine of not more than $2,000.
Okay.
So I stand corrected.
So it is current felony with penalty.
To attempt to register somebody to vote?
A person who is not a qualified and registered elector shall not willfully offer to vote or attempt to vote in an election held in the state.
Okay. Mine was different than that, but, and to register them to vote, too.
If we could, if we could focus on Amendment Two, please?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would, my amendment would be to amend the last paragraph by inserting after 5192 through 5193, the following quote, "As long as the bills are amended to require that those applying to obtain a non-commercial license and/or personal identification card must first prove that they have never had a driving infraction in the United States or in other countries."
Okay, so we've moved, Mr. McMillan has moved Amendment Two. Do we have a second associated therewith? Ms. Snyder, a second discussion associated with Amendment Two?
I'd like to speak to my amendment.
Please.
Yeah. Yeah, this would just be, you know, from what I understand from reading the bill, and again, I've, this is, I'm not, I don't have legislative staff, and there was no bill summary, so it's one of the reasons why I didn't even want this legislation or this resolution brought up. So I can't really look at it in depth. But from what I can understand, somebody could appear at a Secretary of State if this bill passes. They could have just been involved in, you know, several accidents in some other country, in the United States somewhere. They could show up. You know, I read the one section that says they get a temporary license even before they, there's any verification of the document's authenticity that's being given. So we could have somebody who is, you know, just a horrible driver, and we are giving them, and they're undocumented, and giving them a license, so, or allowing them on our streets. So that's, that was the reason for this amendment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other, President Albridge?
I appreciate the thought behind the amendment. I have a practical question, though, and that is, how do you prove a negative? How do I prove I've never had a traffic violation in Europe?
You know, I'm not the one that's undocumented trying to get a license. So I don't know how they're going to do it, but it seems like the reverse of that is for us to try to prove it. And, you know, that's not, what are we going to go to some, we don't even know if this, where this person really resided from. We're going to scan the, I mean, that's, we're going to scan the world to try to figure out. And we don't, you know, I mean, there's just, there's so many unknowns that, you know, I think that the proof has to be on the person who is undocumented and trying to obtain a license. I mean, I, you know, I'm not a legislator right now. I don't know how it would work out. We're not writing legislation. We're just saying, this is in a resolution. The bill writers will have to figure out how that works. So I don't know.
Fair enough. Other thoughts associated therewith? We're on Amendment Three. Amendment, I beg your pardon. You are right. Time for some late afternoon caffeine. Amendment Two, yes?
Can I just add something? So in order to get a driver's license, they still have to pass the test like everyone else, and still have to take a driving test like everyone else, correct? To show that they can drive. Am I correct? Okay.
My understanding, yes.
And I'm saying, even without the license now, people are driving. Bad ones, good ones, you know, whatever, whoever's driving, they're going to drive. So the license process actually gives people a way to, you know, have something of value, to hold them accountable, to track them, to, you know, if they are bad driving, to have some way to, you know, they're more likely to stop, not run away from an accident. I think it would, and I, you know, and I know plenty of residents, including people who have terrible driving records, and they still continue to have a driver's license, residents, because they have an infraction or an accident. So the level is, if they had any driving infraction, so if they got a parking ticket or if they got, I mean, like, it just seems, I could see if it's somebody who has a history of, you know, some sort of, something really egregious and non-compliant, but I would say, you know, drunk driving, you know, drunk driving records or something like that. But then it should apply to everybody, not just, it would be dangerous for anybody like that could be on the road regardless of their citizenship status. So I don't, it seems a little heavy-handed for people who are, and I think that there's going to be a disincentive. I mean, I think they're going to drive anyway, because they have to. But I don't know what, making obstacles, if that's going to be in the interest of everyone or not.
So I'm going to take the question as non- rhetorical. And Mr. McMillan, you offered the amendment. Any, and do you care to clarify, associated with the term driving infraction?
No, but I mean, if we're not, okay, so we're talking about somebody that we don't know necessarily where they're from. They're, you know, and there's a lot of fine people that would be, you know, utilizing this, I mentioned, but they're also, you've got to anticipate anybody. So there's going to be people showing up who are saying they're from someplace. We're not, we don't have to just verify that the document's authentic that they're showing before they get on the, before there's a temporary. And, you know, so there, so it's going to be hard to say that they have only committed one infraction, and it was, you know, drunk driving one time or something in 10 years. If they're, we can't even verify necessarily where they're from, you know, what their data, what that country's database is like, if it's very good or not. I mean, these are the, these are kind of the issues that you end up getting into when you're talking about giving people that are undocumented, potentially, driver's licenses. So I, you know, I don't, I would just say that they have to prove that they have a clean driving record, is no infractions.
Ms. Snyder?
Might I just say that this is not in our constitutional purview to be?
You mean the whole resolution?
Well, you could certainly make the case that it's not a state board issue. There's no doubt. And from that vantage point, you have the right to, yeah, to abstain from the different votes. There's no doubt about that. I think, though, if you take up the vote, if you take up the issue, I do think the question Ms. Fecto raises is an important one. I guess the question becomes, what about a more prosaic driving infraction? You're driving 30 in a 25, you're driving 60 in a 55, and you get a ticket for that. Is that, should that really be a bar from ever having a license under this legislation? Is that, is that the intent?
Go through the process of becoming a citizen and then get the license.
Okay, so it's really not the driving infraction in that regard? It's the, it's the absence of citizenship?
But it's hard to say. You're talking about undocumented, they, you know, they could represent they had one, but maybe there was more. Like I said, who knows what that country or their, you know, their database, their systems are? I mean, you just don't know. So I just think they need to prove their, I.
Fair enough. Any other, any other thoughts on this amendment? Ms. Ramos Montini?
Maybe these amendments should be recommended to the sponsors of the bills. We're not writing the bill. We're writing a resolution in support of what the bill says as of now, and keeping the children, the students that we serve, in front of everything. This is why we're proposing this resolution, because our responsibility is to educate all of our students, to have a safe and orderly environment, less anxiety, stress, and all of those things that impedes the students' learning. This is why this resolution. We're not about the drivers, the drivers and all of these other things. We're about the children that we serve. That's why we're presenting, introducing, recommending this resolution. So I will be voting no on Amendment Two.
Anything else on Amendment Two before we vote? Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Fecto?
On page nine of the legislation, and I don't, I'm not saying that this resolves the issue, but it does say if an application is received from a person previously licensed in another jurisdiction, Secretary of State shall request a copy of the applicant's driver's record and other available information. When received, the driving record and other available information become part of the driver's record. Does not indicate other countries. It does indicate for other states. So I know that was part of the amendment. I'm just throwing that out there, that the bill sponsors, at least, I think, have thought through that.
With respect to other states?
With respect to other states, anyways.
Fair enough. Thank you.
But I'll say that that's not part of the bill, because only the bold part and the crossed out is part of the bill. So that's currently in state law. But I believe, you know, it's saying on page three, except as provided in Section 307. So everything after that, I believe, doesn't, I mean, 307 is kind of establishing a different route, the legislation.
Thank you. Ms. Fecto?
I just, we always talk about college and career-ready. I don't see how you can be college and career-ready in Michigan without a driver's license. I really don't. And that goes for everybody, you know? So I think we should be doing more to promoting, as Tiffany brought up, everybody having, making it easier for everybody to have a driver's license, be able to track, you know, I think it also allows for more accountability when they do have a driver's license. So I think it is part of the purview, even though I get it, this is not a direct education issue. I think, just as we talk about being, having job skills, you know, having a driver's license is integral to being college and career-ready in a state that has such terrible mess transportation now.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments before we vote on Amendment Two? Being none, hearing none. All in favor of Amendment Two, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to Amendment Two, say nay.
Nay.
All abstentions? One abstention. The amendment is voted down. One, six, one. We could, yes, please?
I'd like to make my, move my amendment number one to amend the last paragraph by inserting after the House bill numbers, "As long as the bills are amended to require that those applying to obtain a non-commercial license and/or personal identification card must first prove that they have never committed a felony or serious misdemeanor in another country or in the United States where the definition of a felony and misdemeanor is as defined in Michigan statute." And then this, oh, there's support. That's my motion.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion associated therewith?
Usually, speak to the amendment.
Speak to the amendment, that's fine.
Yeah, usually the amendment-maker. So, I mean, this speaks for itself. We, again, a person that's undocumented, you don't know their history, it is going to be hard to prove a negative. And yet, you know, I think it's incumbent on somebody who is undocumented, we don't know really who they are, to prove that they, you know, should be on our roads and that they're safe. And we want them to be transporting and getting places, and that they don't have a history of violence or of crimes. So I think that, though it's going to be difficult, I don't, again, I don't think we can rely on databases, like, require them to do, the state to do a search in some other country, relying on their databases. And it's just, for me, it's one of the difficulties when you're suggesting that undocumented people should, should have driver's licenses.
Thank you very much. Other thoughts on Amendment Number One? We are on Amendment Number One. Thoughts on Amendment Number One? Any additional thoughts? Going once and twice and hearing none. All in favor of Amendment Number One, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to Amendment Number One, say nay.
Nay.
All abstentions? Vote is one, six, one. The amendment fails. Amendment Number Four.
My final one is to amend the last paragraph by inserting after the bill numbers, quote, "As long as the bills are amended to prohibit those who obtain a non-commercial license and/or personal identification card under this legislation from obtaining taxpayer-paid welfare from the state of Michigan or a subsidiary thereof."
Okay. And would you like to speak, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
No, I know that a lot of people don't, I hope, nobody comes to this country to get on welfare. I don't, I'm not saying that they are, I'm just saying that they shouldn't. And so, you know, somebody who's undocumented, we don't know who they are, we shouldn't be dipping into the pockets of our taxpayers, paying welfare to people who are undocumented.
Other, other thoughts on Amendment Number Four? Amendment Number Four. Ms. Fecto?
What welfare, what welfare benefits or state, I guess when you say welfare, you mean like any state spot, state subsidy of any kind?
I mean, state assistance, it's taxpayer-paid. You know, anything that comes out of taxpayer-paid.
Like if they go to the hospital and they're really sick?
I don't think we're paying, you know, I think there's, they'd have their, you, they can, as I, here again, we're a state board getting into these issues. I know it's awkward, but I don't know why we're doing this to begin with. But nonetheless, as I understand it, you know, we're not giving them money if they show up in the ER. We treat them. We treat everybody, as far as I understand it. So I wouldn't consider that to be welfare.
Yeah, just trying to. And, um. If they have refugee status, they come here with very little, maybe no documentation because they're a refugee, they would still not be eligible for food?
I don't know if they get federal.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I.
I mean, they might, and that wouldn't, they wouldn't be prohibited. I don't know.
I, you know, I just, I don't want to deprive anybody of food if they're going to be hungry.
A lot of charities.
Yeah.
I donate regularly.
Ms. Ramos Montini?
I have to point out that immigrants don't come for welfare. They work, they work in whatever, in whatever. They work, they work in whatever, in whatever to make money. And many of my friends that are immigrants, that are laid off from jobs, go and find whatever to stay away from welfare. We don't, we don't come here for welfare. So I will be voting no on this amendment.
Thank you very much. Other, other board members on Amendment Number Four? Anyone else on Amendment Number Four? Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor of Amendment Number Four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? One. Amendment Number Four fails, one, six, one. The amendment having been addressed, we are at the base resolution at this point. Any additional discussion associated with the base resolution?
There was, I don't know if this is an amendment or not, but at the, the last paragraph, therefore it be resolved, we're sending it to members of the Michigan Legislature and the, and the governor. And I had sent, as recommended, additional people, Lieutenant Governor, the Secretary of State, and the Attorney General.
I hear that as a friendly amendment. Does anybody have an objection associated with that friendly amendment to the base resolution? Hearing none. It is amended in a friendly fashion. We have the base resolution in front of us. Any more comments associated therewith? Going once and twice and thrice, hearing and seeing none. All in favor of the resolution with the friendly, friendly amendment from Ms. Ramos Montini, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion, base resolution passes, six, one, one. We are, at this point, at the part of the agenda for board member comments. Are there any board members who would like to make comments? President Albridge?
Just very briefly, you're going to get an email. I sent it to Maryland to forward to you from ECS, the Education Commission for the States, outlining the support that they provide for us as members in the State Board of Education. So I encourage you, if you have any research needs, to reach out to them directly, and they can support you in that.
Thank you very much. Other board members?
And follow up on a comment that was made by the woman from EMPATH. I do think that we should investigate using our MARS code or mending to inhibit the use of the, the tactic of using due process hearing against parents who file a complaint around special ed. What it does is it throws the parent into court, they have to pay thousands of dollars for an attorney. There's hardly any attorneys that take these cases because they're so not lucrative because parents with special ed, special needs kids are often broke. So, so anyway, I do, I would like to investigate, and I would be happy to help, personally help if there's some way I can help.
Part of a broader look at, at this area that we're going to be doing in the next six months. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Ramos Montini?
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank everybody for the discussion that we had and for your vote. And I'd like to thank the superintendent and Marty and everybody in the Legislative Department for assisting us to put this resolution together. I'm emotional.
Thank you very much. Any other board members who care to share at the end of the meeting? We have future meeting dates, Tuesday, February 11th, Tuesday, March 10th, Tuesday, April 14th. All regular meetings, all at 9:30, all here. Board members who have additional topics that they would like on future agendas, please let us know. I do have one additional announcement. I have copies of Adelante, which is a publication, bilingual, bicultural, in the Lansing area. On page 12 is our very own Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, who is featured in a two-page spread. So congratulations to her. Board members, if you are honored in some way, please let me know. I would be happy to amplify that honor at a state board meeting. I am giving precisely one copy to everyone at the table. Thou shalt not take two. Three is, in Monty Python language, right out. Thank you very much.
But it wasn't my, it wasn't me that, that asked you to pass those, right?
It was not you. It was not you. It was not you. Thank you very much. Have a great day.